Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It's March 5th, it's Tuesday, and it's 6:45. Madam City Clerk, no, the meetings were called to order and we do the pledge of allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice alone.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
There is nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, we come to the ceremonial items. We have two ceremonial items today, and the first one is we recognize March as the American Red Cross Month. Our collaboration with the American Red Cross promotes community engagement and volunteerism. It encourages residents to actively participate in initiatives that make a difference, along with the city's Citizen Core program. Volunteers participate in disaster drills and have the opportunity to contribute positively to the community's resilience and vitality. And with that, I hereby proclaim March and American Red Cross Month in Cupertino. I would like to invite you to speak, say a few words about the American Red Cross.
Very good. I'm Stuart Chesson. I am the co-disaster chair of Silicon Valley, or all of Santa Clara County on that. And we just have this little presentation, and I want to thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the council for proclaiming the month of March for Red Cross. Now, Red Cross is made up of various groups. We do disasters, which we're known for quite a bit. Blood service is another one. But we also help with CPR, first aid, and in international services such as international law, and that's a big thing happening right now, and service to the armed forces ever since the Civil War. So every eight minutes, we're providing assistance somewhere in the United States. We were out there at least 180 times a day, somewhere around. So, and for the armed forces, we're there to support our veterans and active folks 365 days, every day for 24 hours on that. Now, anyone entering the blood, getting a hospital, excuse me, anyone going into a hospital, one in seven needs blood, and Red Cross is 40% of the blood supply throughout the United States. So we're always looking for fresh blood. And millions of people are trained in the first aid, CPR, AED, that help save lives. And this is all done with 90% of volunteers and 90% of the funds that we receive from our donors goes to the people that are affected. Now, in Silicon Valley, for the year of 2023, we had 100 events that we did here in this county. We had 16,483 blood donations, and we did 477 military members where we've done casework for them to assist them, and we did this with 1,911 volunteers. So I want to thank you for all the support you guys have been giving us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chesson. Now, we should take a photograph. If you could come up, councilmembers.
I'll take that from you. I'll take that from you, Mayor. Let me take that off.
... Yeah, that's good, because that's kind of... Perfect. And something more. Thank you.
As we await the arrival of spring, we begin to think about the natural artistry that the season brings. Just as spring beautifies our world, art beautifies and colors our city. During March, we celebrate the artistic contributions and achievements of young people in Cupertino and officially declare March as Youth Arts Month in Cupertino. We reaffirm our commitment to promoting the importance of art education and encourage quality art programs in our city. And the proclamation that we will be sending later is being issued to the Santa Clara County Office of Education, which supports arts education for all students in Santa Clara County schools. So congratulations to the, all the youth who participate in art activities in Cupertino and in our county. That's it for the ceremonial items. Going, moving on. Postponements and orders of the day. City staff, is there, there is a...
Yes, Mayor Mohan, we would like to continue item number five, so that we can continue the contract negotiation with the vendor.
Okay. We need a motion for that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I move that we postpone item number five to March 19th.
Second.
Okay. Please vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, we're doing oral communications next, and this portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including informational items. Total time for oral communication will be limited to one hour, and individual speakers are limited to three minutes. And I won't need to further limit the time because I'm not sure how many people there are, but we will stick to the three-minute rule for today. Are there any cards, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak in Community Hall, and currently I see no hands raised virtually. So we will start with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Andrea Wald, followed by Kitty Moore. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Good to see you all again. I'm going to just start out and say that we have had a number of housing bills that have come through in the last several years, as you all are aware, and one of the most, I guess, people who have created tremendous amounts of housing bills is Senator Weiner. And he represents San, area of San Francisco. And I had the pleasure, or displeasure, last year of following one of his bills that was, to me, attempting to take apart the California Coastal Commission. I had to follow it all the way through all the committees in the Senate and the Assembly for probably five months. My mother and my brother are in the aptus Santa Cruz Coastal Commission area, and I spoke to a lot of the council members and Board of Supervisors in their area about this bill. We thought at the time that it was just about taking apart the Coastal Commission. But lo and behold, right before, I believe it was in August, Senator Weiner changed it so that it evidently had attacked a section of San Francisco. This bill is multi-level, as I have said before. I have never encountered bills like this. It's very unusual, especially with a senator who has the ability to present anything they want to, but this, to me, is a conundrum. There are more things going on. He has a new bill he just put in in February, which is trying to separate the coastal area of San Francisco out of the Coastal Commission, and then he has another one where he's trying to prevent sequoia on a section of the downtown of San Francisco, which I'm very concerned about. But right now, I'm going to concentrate on these two bills. One of them was signed by the governor as law. The other one is a potential sign for the governor in September. I intend to track this new bill by Senator Weiner. I believe that there is ulterior motive. I think that the goal is to strip the Coastal Commission of any control of decisions along the California coast and deliver them to Sacramento and maybe to other authorities, I don't know, because there are issues of putting in offshore facilities wind power. You have areas where you have reclamation of salt into freshwater. I think they want to make these decisions themselves and not us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Andrea Wald, followed by Kitty Moore. Welcome, Andrea.
Hi, my name is Andrea Wald. I'm speaking on behalf of a group called Community for Natural Place Surfaces. Our goal is to educate as many as we can to the ills of artificial turf in hopes of avoiding decisions to be made for installation in our local cities and throughout California. We are very worried about the impact that artificial turf is having on our environment and the health and safety of all. Our first major victory was when, with our input and community support, the Sunnyvale City Council unanimously voted to keep natural grass in a local park instead of opting for artificial turf. They are also now considering a ban. Now for a quick artificial turf lesson in relation to Cupertino's climate action plan goals. The first main point in the climate action plan, and I quote, is "to reduce our city's greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by the year 2040." The section basically mentions transportation. Artificial turf is not manufactured in California, and not only are greenhouse gases emitted during manufacture, but also when it's transported here on flatbed trucks. Another section talks about natural systems and biodiversity. The plan mentions trees, how to manage and protect them, and how they naturally capture and store carbon, thereby reducing the greenhouse gas impact. There is mention of conducting an urban heat island study in order to identify areas in Cupertino for planting trees. The same absolutely holds true for natural grass. Converting acres of fields with plastic actually emits CO2 and methane rather than absorbing CO2. Artificial turf gets up to 80 degrees hotter than natural grass, creating a heat island effect. This and the emission of greenhouse gases is leading to an increase in global warming. Artificial turf can also undermine biodiversity, as it does not provide habitat for insects and other wildlife and blocks soil from sequestering carbon dioxide. Next on the climate action plan is the call to reduce waste, specifically by reducing unnecessary consumption and increasing waste diversion from landfill. Artificial turf is plastic, lasts eight to 10 years, is not recyclable, and ends up in landfill, incinerated, or even dumped in open fields where the toxic chemicals continue to leach into the ground. And since there's no landfill space available nearby nor factories in California to burn it, it's shipped off on those same flatbed trucks that brought it here to begin with. The toxic chemicals in artificial turf, plus the microplastics that break off the fields and float our waterways, are harmful to aquatic life and end up in drinking water. There's an increased rate of injuries and studies showing many serious health effects. The climate action plan notes that the community of Cupertino should do its fair share, and that by working together, they can lead the way for other communities by demonstrating effective leadership, innovative thinking, and commitment to addressing the climate crisis now. I hope when the time comes that City Councils ask to make decision on landscape for city properties that artificial turf is not part of these discussions. I would also hope that you might consider a full-out ban for both city properties and residential use, as did the city of Milbrae. Please look at the big picture when considering the desirability of artificial turf. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Next, we have Kitty Moore, followed by Louise Sedadi. And then we will move to the requesters that are virtually speaking.
Okay, so this is regarding item 11, which is an informational item, which council is not allowed to speak on. This is regarding the BlackBerry Farm fees, and it references Resolution 04-350, and we have an updated resolution. It's actually 22-049 with regards to the BlackBerry Farm golf course, but with, let me go back to the fee part. It's 23-094. And I'll show you. So, within, within our recreation fee schedule, we have a process with which to determine those fees, and I will get to it right here. Okay, so it's Resolution 23-094. It conflicts with the previous 04-350, so that needs to be addressed. I'm sorry, I noticed this this afternoon. And then, when you move up to the actual golf course fees, and I've got plenty of time here, there's certain ones which have been updated, and then you're leaving a good number of them off, and I'm wondering what the rationale is there. We've got these basic fees, but then you've got monthly rates, and you also have power cart rental packs, and you've got this Quick Pass page as well. And so I was hoping that more of the fees would be addressed. And here is what is in the staff report showing the fees, and you'll see what I just showed you, that you're missing a number. So I'm hoping that that can be addressed by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty. Next, we have Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
Good evening. I'm Louise Sedadi, and I wanted to speak about, to thank the council and the city staff for how much more efficient the city council meetings have been running, and how they've been really working on efficiency coupled with transparency. And in particular, that they've actually having meetings before council so that all the council members are fully informed and nobody is ambushed on any subject that will be coming up, that everybody's informed before council comes to meeting and they start deliberations and getting further input. I also wanted to speak on something that bothered me very much after the last council meeting. Different than this council meeting, where individual residents have come up with particular passions and concerns of theirs and spoken, I say kudos to that. What I had a problem with was the same familiar five people that typically show up at council speaking on and on about different items, but speaking in a manner that presents as if it's a theater company. And they would make accusations about how the city was run and making implications that things were not transparent, when they had asked those questions, and those questions had been answered. And so it's very troubling to me to sit through people talking about, they have these questions, and they're pretty damning questions, but they already were addressed. And so no matter how many times the council or the staff have answered those questions, this five people that present like a theater company keep presenting theater, like there's something terribly wrong with the city staff and terribly wrong with the way the council's run. So I'm perfectly fine with people having different opinions. Just be honest, be truthful. And I would like there to be a mechanism where if somebody, as a resident, presents that they've asked the question and it hasn't been answered, that there's some mechanism that the city staff or the council can respond and say it has been addressed multiple times. Because just leaving those accusations hanging in the air sort of lends to a theater production atmosphere where the theater can present whatever fiction they want to. And I really appreciate that the city staff has gone out of its way to be available to different residents and answer their questions. So thank you for all your time and commitment.
Thank you, Louise. We have two people requesting to speak virtually, Lisa and Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Lisa.
I'm in the middle of work, and I can't speak right now, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, then next we will go to Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council, staff. I won't say anything about the previous speaker and her accusations. I do want to point out that I, as a resident of Cupertino, am embarrassed that one of my council members had to come to oral to speak on an item on the agenda. I think that that needs to be fixed so that it can be addressed, not in a, you know, next year or months from now, but at the meeting when the public can address it. It was a valid comment, and the fees to the BlackBerry Farm are critical to finance and solvency, and it should be mentioned on the dais and discussed in public. So I hope that the procedures somehow allow council the same privileges as a member of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
I think we're allowed to make inquiries on the staff from public comments, a very brief.
Brief, brief request.
Yes. A brief is, is this the only recourse for council members to make comments? Can we ask questions ahead of time? Is there any prohibition? We cannot email city manager or staff about a question or information items, or even the public? They can, can they ask questions ahead of time of information items?
Yes, as long, as long as their communication is not shared with a quorum of the council.
Okay, so this is not the only venue that any public or council members can make comment on information items?
And this would be the only venue in which a majority of council members could discuss any item in their...
Thank you for the clarification.
I, there was a packed information in one of the comment regarding artificial turf. I looked in my email, I couldn't find any written comment, so I would encourage the member of the public to please submit your speech to thecitycouncil@cupidino.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to the consent calendar. Is there, are there any items that have been pulled, as far as you know, city manager?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So we have two consent, two items on the consent calendar, item number three and item number four. And is there a motion to...
Mayor, would you like to call for public comment?
Pardon me?
Would you like to call for public comment on this item?
Okay. Yes, I would like to call for public comments on the two consent items.
And I have no requests to speak for three or four, and I see no hands raised virtually either.
Okay. No, no public comments?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Since there are no public comments, let's go ahead with a motion to approve the consent calendar, items number three and four. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Way, you had a comment?
Second.
Oh, okay. All right, let's vote by lights, please.
And Councilmember Way, would you mind voting with your lights? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we come now to the public hearings, and this is item number six on the agenda. It is to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a sign exception to allow two wall signs for a single tenant, Shane Company, at an existing retail building. Application number is EXC-2022-004. Applicant is Kevin Tollman, Shane Company. Location is 19900 Stevens Creek Boulevard, and the APN is 369-05-044.
Mayor, before you do the staff presentation, would you like to take ex parte communication?
Yes. Are there any ex parte communications that we, anyone needs to disclose? Councilmember Way?
Yes, I'd like to declare ex parte. I did go and see the Shane Company fiscally and talk with the exec director and owners, and then, you know, toured the place and see the signs, so I want to declare that.
I too had the same communication with staff from Shane Company about 10 days ago. Okay. Staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a presentation prepared by John Matier, Senior Planner for Community Development. And just a heads up, I believe the applicant and the appellant also has a presentation following the staff presentation. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and Council. John Matier, Community Development. Yes, so as read by the mayor, this is the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a sign exception to allow two wall signs for a single tenant, the Shenko, at the location 19900 Stevens Creek Boulevard. A little background on the property and the parcel in the most recent history of entitlements. As you can see with the map, Shenko occupies a site that was previously occupied Scandinavian Furniture for, gosh, about 20, 30 years. Within the last five years, the new property owners had demised the space into three tenant spaces, which include Tiro Dance Company in the rear, and as well as Shenko occupying the eastern half of this building. The most recent title came in September 28th of last year, when Shane Company received approval for architectural site approval for facade improvements to the front or north facade and the side or east facade, just really upgrading the facades with new materials and whatnot, not necessarily adding any height or square footage to the, to this, to that space. At the time of the approval, signage was not, as typical actually with any type of architectural site approval and/or development permit, staff doesn't review signage at that time. However, subsequent to this approval, Shenko wanted to move forward with sign review and an exception. So on December 12th, 2023, the Planning Commission did review the sign exception package, which was a request for three signage, three wall signs, one along the front and two along the side, which we'll go into further detail in the next few slides. They did approve with modifications for only one wall sign on the east facade unlit by a vote of 4-0. So the applicant on December 20th, 2023, appealed the Planning Commission's decision to modify the science exception as detailed in the staff report. Their reasons were for the need for the, to be reheard de novo by the council was that, you know, the belief that the Planning Commission didn't take into consideration following points, that the building is really further set... that the building is really further set back from Stevens Creek Boulevard obscured by mature trees more so than other properties. The design of the retail building is, has a furniture, it's really along the east facade, not along actually the front facade. So extra signage would be needed to indicate where that front entrance is. Further, the design of the building is more industrial office and retail, as evidenced by the fact that this building had always been a furniture store prior to this, the more recent demising of the spaces by the new ownership group. As a reminder, council's review of the planning commission's determination is de novo. I mean, it's a brand new review. You aren't just looking at the, the reasons for appeal and responses to that as well. So a couple of slides that will go through what's there existing, which is the, the top elevation and what was approved with ASA, which also includes the proposed signage. So on the top is what's there right now and what was approved in September is the elevation below. This is the north facade that faces Stevens Creek with the, with, you can see that the proposed signage on the north facade is pretty much identical to what's there already. This sign, as we'll discuss even further in a few minutes, is actually permitted by right. You know, each business is allowed by right one wall sign. Along the east elevation or east facade, again, top is what's existing, bottom was approved for modification. The request from the applicant is to have two wall signs, two lit wall signs, halo lit wall signs along the east elevation. Throughout the staff report, this presentation, we'll call them location one, which is the closest to the corner of the north facade and the most visible of the two from Stevens Creek Boulevard. Of the, of the, of the two wall signs on the east facade. And location two, which is, which would be the wall sign above the entrance. Planning commission's approval was for the sign to be approved at location two. That was also unlit, however. So what does the sign ordinance say about, specifically about wall signs for retail businesses? So, right here, so again, as stated before, retail establishments are allowed one sign per business with exterior franchise. You are by right allowed one additional sign and under three circumstances. The first is that the business has no ground sign adjacent to more than one street or shopping center driveway. In the case of Shane Co, they do have a monument sign already being utilized, so they would not qualify for having that second wall sign by right. The sign directed to interior project and not visible for any public right of way. And that's not the case. And also it's a single tenant building pad with more than 5,000 square, 4,000, 5,000 square feet, excuse me, which is also not the case. So going over on the right columns, detailing each, the, the existing and proposed signs. So the north facade is existing and is also permitted with the new facade as well. That's the one facing the Stevens Creek Boulevard. Location one is, although adjacent to a shopping center driveway, the business is not permitted to have a second wall sign since they are utilizing space on the existing ground sign. Therefore, you need an exception for that. And for location two proposed, a single business is not permitted to have a third wall sign. And again, you would also need a sign exception for that as well. Upon making a decision, a recommendation from staff and also the decision-making body, findings have to be made. There's three findings for sign exceptions. The first is that the literal enforcement of the provisions of the, of the, of the sign ordinance will result in restrictions inconsistent with the spirit and intent of the title. That the granting of the exception will not result in a condition which is material, materially detrimental to public health, safety, welfare. And that the exception to be granted is one that will require the least modification of the prescribed regulations in minimum variance that will accomplish the purpose. Really quick reminder of the sign ordinance and its purpose and intent. So this is a summary of basically why do we have a sign ordinance? What does a sign, what does the sign ordinance propose to do? And what is the intent behind it? And really is, it's two things. The first is to identify enhanced businesses while maintaining the aesthetic appearance of the city, ensuring that these signs look good, that they're pleasing for the public. And the second one is supporting these, while supporting the needs of the businesses and residents as well, ensuring the safety of the public. And, you know, the intent for this, really, the safety portion is distraction to drivers, as an example, that are driving by on, let's say Stevens Creek Boulevard, Deans Boulevard or any other right of way that's adjacent to a business. Quick analysis of the, of the findings and how the staff has come to this recommendation. So the first part, as we discussed with the findings, is the requirement for least modifications of regulations and the minimum variance. The recommending approval or approving the exception for three wall signs is, is in the view of staff, far above allowed the number of wall signs permitted for a single business. Allocate multiple signage to a single business is contrary to providing architectural aesthetic harmony of signs as it relates to building design and quantity to allow for the good visibility from the public and needs of the business. So in sum, you know, staff's recommendation does not include all three signs, rather just the two. Therefore, allowing for one additional wall sign along the east facade could be seen as a minor deviation from, from the municipal code. Had the, as an example, had the applicant decided to take out the monument sign altogether, they could have been allowed a wall sign with just a building or sign permit, rather, than having to go through the exception process. The recommended action is that staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution of holding the appeal in part, approving exception for one of the two requested wall signs along the east facade. So in some, basically just, just two, two of the wall signs, two wall signs altogether. So next steps is, should the project be approved? The city council's decision on this project is final unless a reconsideration is filed within 10 calendar days of the date of the decision. All approvals granted by the city council shall go into effect after 14 days. And that concludes my presentation. Just as a reminder, the applicant is here with their own presentation. So when they're ready to go, I'll be the one helping them out.
Okay, we'd like the appellant or the applicant to come and make her case.
Hi, I'm Dani from Shane Company. I'm our director of store experience. I'm going to let John pull up my presentation. Cool. All right, we're on the right deck. It says Cupertino signage. Okay, if you could click to the next slide. All right, so just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight for council. Shane Co has been in the city of Cupertino since 1988. We knew we needed to move out of the Oaks, as you guys are probably all very familiar with that project, and really wanted to stay in Cupertino. We looked for a really long time. We had several buildings outside of Cupertino, a couple in Santa Clara. And we're really thankful we got to stay with inside Cupertino. Shane Co is a top 25 tax contributor to the city. We draw over 100,000 customers a year. Many of those are not Cupertino residents, so we are bringing a lot of people into the city. And since moving to our new location in 2021, traffic is down 12%. And we believe some of this is, some of those reasons John highlighted, if you'll click to the next slide. So we believe our new location has a couple of unique visibility challenges and it's hard for customers to find us and is contributing to our traffic being down in this location. Previously, we were in the Oaks for a very long time. I think most of you are probably familiar with that. And that was more of a natural retail zone, right? We got traffic from all the other businesses. Where we are today does not deliver on that same level of traffic. So our new store is not a, seen as a retail destination. The building itself has a mid, it's mid-block, it's set back. You can't turn directly left into the parking lot off Stevens Creek. I was in the store today with our store team and talked with the store manager and we are hearing daily, they're here one to two times a day. Someone mentions how hard we were to find, how they missed us, how they had to turn around. And we believe, you know, that's front side facing Stevens Creek, the westbound traffic that would really help people be able to see, oh, that's where I need to go. Uh, next slide. We did host an open house on February 8th. I was here for that. That's when I met with mayor and hung. And we had four attendees come to, and none of them were concerned about the signage. They were very like, oh, okay, this is what you're doing. So we're happy to hear that. Next one. This is just a look at everywhere we pull traffic in and where we advertise, you know, how we get, where everyone that comes to our store, this is where they come from. And so you can see we're drawing a lot of people in. Just wanted to point out, like, obviously, a lot of people are very, if you live in Cupertino, you probably know the city pretty well and know where we are. But we are drawing a lot of people from other parts of the county. And then this is just another look at that. As you can see, the red line is like where we get the most traffic from, which is Cupertino, your residence in that area. And then further out is the yellows where we get a little bit less and then green and then blue. So just a look at where we draw that traffic again. This is what was previously approved by staff when the building was going to be subdivided by into six or seven tenants and we took half the space. So this is just a look at, we're well below the square footage of signage. And then additionally, just what was previously approved, we're well below that number as well in terms of number of signs. Here's a look at just what this building will look like. John had those elevations, but here is a color rendering of what we're looking to do to the building. And like John mentioned, the overall tenant improvement has been approved. We're just speaking of signage, but I wanted to show you guys this. And then here's a look at what these signs look like. And one of the things I wanted to mention is that we are planning to, they're all on dimmers, so they're a dimmable halo lit sign, so they're not internally lit. So they're definitely a more classic subtle look. And we are on a dimmer, so if the city had a problem, we could absolutely turn them down. And we've also agreed to turn them off by 9:00 PM. As we close, the latest we're open is probably 9:00 PM during holiday and that's a couple week period. But most of the time we close at 8:00 PM at the latest, so we could turn those signs off by nine. So that concludes my presentation. I appreciate the time.
Does council have questions for the appellant? Actually, you should probably come up and just be here. Councilmember Wei?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Mohan. So my question is, I look at the report, the whole building, the property itself is 83,766 square footage, but building itself is 28,813 square footage. How many, how much square footage is Shane Co?
Oh, over 15,000. We have like 15.
So over 15,000 for Shane Co?
Yeah, we have the half the sweep.
Okay, understood. That's just my, that's my brief question.
Or half the building, sorry, yes.
Councilmember Chow?
So you currently have three tenants, three businesses actually occupying the building, right?
Correct.
And so how are the other two businesses getting people to know they're there?
Well, it's a, well, it's Keller Williams, so it's a retail brokerage. So I don't think they have as many, and then it's a dance studio where they're continuing to be the same, right? You bring your kid to dance and I think it's the same.
They're in the back.
And they're in the back too, yeah.
So they didn't require a sign.
I think they just don't need as much natural, like, we're retail. I think, you know, we, in order to make the business profitable, we need a lot of customers, right? And so I think those other app, tenants are just in a different category in terms of traffic driving. Like, we are true thing, our true measures, we got to get people in the door, right?
So Keller Williams, their sign is just on the door, right?
Front, I think they have a frontage sign, yes. Yeah. And then they, and they both have monument, they both have a place on the monument sign as well.
And why do you need, I understand that you want the westbound traffic on Stevens Creek to be able to find you. And why do you need two signs? Why is one not enough?
Well, I think the other sign is to indicate where our front door is and we're looking to be able to have, because it's set back some from the road and not super clear, we're looking to build something out so people understand where to come in.
So would the location one versus, if we permit only one, would location one be more preferable than two?
Yes, for sure.
And the size of the signs would be the same, right? Just different location?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Yeah.
I went by last night and I thought I saw the signs there already.
So we have the one sign that's been permitted since we've been open, since 20, September of 2021.
I saw the lighted one facing Stevens Creek.
Yes, so that's been there.
Along the side, I, I saw two signs.
Those are banner, temporary banners. Yeah, those are just banners.
And in the same locations that you.
Yes, where we would want them. Those are, those banners that exist up today are where the new signs would be.
Okay, well, what's the difference between a banner and a sign?
The banner is just, it's not lit and it's literally just canvas, like, or plastic stretched with grommet holes that they've put, hung the banner up.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like fabricated and attached to the building.
Okay, and the city is fine with that?
On a temporary basis, so they had to apply for a temporary sign permit.
I see. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, councilmember Wei.
Thank you. So my, I have another question is, could you put up the picture of the premise with more than your company that's original, could be, what it could be? If it's sublit to more than, if Shane Company just rent one-third of it, you have two more companies?
Oh, yes.
What would that look like? Not this one. This one, I do want to comment, I think Shane Company has very classic signs. The one before with a few, Shane Company doesn't occupy the whole 15,000 square feet, that if we have other.
It's showing on mine, but it's frozen on the, when I share.
Okay, so my, so while you're doing that, let me ask the question. If we have, say, two companies in, so Shane Company and another company occupied another 75,000 square footage, is that our ordinance to allow each tenant two signs?
So in this case, they, each, each business is allowed a sign that's regulated by the, by the frontage. So one square foot per frontage. For every, one foot of, of frontage, you're allowed one square foot of sign area.
Okay, so if it is two companies, then the other tenant would have a sign in front, the same square footage, probably the same square footage of this Shane Company store sign, right?
Right, so the, the second sign would, would be limited by the square footage of the second facade.
Okay, and then they would have a north-facing sign too, on the Stevens Creek Boulevard?
Correct.
So my question is, if this were two tenants, we would have seen four signs? Each would have one facing Stevens Creek, one signage that on the door to show who, where they are?
So if we had, so, okay, so let's say that, I wish I could draw on this. If we, so if Shane Co just had that corner brick area right there, right? And, you know, face with that, with two facades and then let's say that A2 tenant that just says tenant in white, one, they could not have a sign on that, on the front of Stevens Creek Boulevard because they don't actually have that. That would be considered an off-site sign.
Okay.
So that any wall sign would have to be basically on the frontage that.
Okay, so they would have one sign only then? Okay, so you would see two of those signs anyway, because you have two tenants, you have to allow two signs. And if you have three tenants, according to the square footage, it would be smaller to fit their square footage?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, council.
Thank you. Oh, could we go back to that graphic, please? Okay, that's great. Okay, so tenant A1 would have had their door facing Stevens Creek Boulevard? How would you get in there?
I, I don't know. I think, I think it's up to the tenant themselves whether they want to have entrance along Stevens Creek or, or the private, or the driveway.
Okay, and so just looking at Google Street View, it looks like the, it's Keller Williams, I believe. They do have a, a street-facing entrance. Okay, so, and it, it's kind of interesting. It almost looks as though there was a consideration. It almost looks as though there was a consideration of having an entrance on Stevens Creek, because there's like a cobblestone walkway up. Okay, and then, so I, I'm just kind of curious what, kind of going back in time, but what was the decision, what, why was the decision made to move the entrance so far back? Was it just trying to be symmetrical with the length of the?
It was actually based on, actually where the entrance is today, when we moved to our tenant improvement, it is moving closer to Stevens Creek. The decision, though, to have it on that side of the building was made based on not wanting to have customers walk further from their cars to the parking lot, and that's a security thing based on what we sell.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering about that last part there as well. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yes, absolutely.
There is an apartment complex sort of across from the parking lot. And have, have you reached out to them about the lighting?
Yeah, so we gave us addresses to anyone that lived within five hundred feet of the building, I believe. And with that is who we sent invites for that open house that we offered two different times, one at lunchtime, one at night, to be able to accommodate different people. I believe one of the four attendees was a director of potentially like the HOA there, and he came over and took some pictures of the board and was kind of like, yeah, this is fine, we just don't want things, big lighted, lit things near Stevens Creek, and we're not doing that, so he seemed good with it. But, so that, that is, we definitely did invite all of those people that lived within five hundred feet to comment and show opposition, and no one did.
And, and what about the, the dance school at the back? Are they affected at all by, by the signs?
No, we have a really positive relationship with the dance studio. Every once in a while, when they do the Nutcracker, it's a little crazy at Christmas time, because we have a lot of customers and they are doing the Nutcracker. But, no, I, they actually are excited about our tenant improvements and want us to paint the whole building, because they don't like the color it is, and we've kind of agreed. So we have a relatively positive relationship with that tenant, and they've not mentioned anything about signs.
Okay. And, and so your request is for two lighted signs along the east facade?
East side, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll probably have you up again, but for now you can have a seat. Okay, let's bring it back to council for our discussions.
Mayor, would you, would you, would you like to take public comment at this time?
Yes, I'll take public comments.
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak in community hall from Louise Sadadi and Jean Bedord. And I've lost my virtual screen, but, so let's start with Louise. And I can provide that information later.
Good evening again. So I, I really think that this is a win-win proposition. Helping Shane Company increase their customers with two low-lit signs will help the city's tax basis. It's a, it sounds like a great company. It's a clean company, no pollution, no loud parties, or any people that you wouldn't want to encourage to come to our city. Instead, they're encouraging people to come for a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Usually, their customers would be new customers coming for their wedding ring, their engagement ring, and potentially an anniversary ring, or gifts from loving husbands, boyfriends, or jewelry for oneself. Happy, happy occasions. And it's not like a dance company where customers come two to three times a week for months on end or years. You know, they need constant new customers, because it's not like people get married every week. You know, like, I've been married for forty-two years. I did want a ten-year anniversary ring. I call it my ten-year service award, but anyway, more, more of that some other time. We should help companies who are loyal to Cupertino and chose to stay in Cupertino. You know, we, so I think kudos to Shane. They, they have demonstrated that they're really trying to be a good company, and I think we should do everything we can to assist companies that have demonstrated a willingness to stay in the city, work with the city, and work with the neighbors. So there you have it. And maybe I'll, now that I've been married for forty-two years, I should maybe get a forty-year anniversary ring. But I guess that's off-topic. So upon that note, I will step away.
Thank you, Louise. And next we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean. And I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm speaking tonight regarding the Shane Company's request for additional signs for its jewelry company, Jewelry Store on Stevens Creek. The store was previously located in the Oak Shopping Center, which has since been demolished. The company did extensive search for a replacement location. And fortunately for our city, they chose to stay in Cupertino. However, the available site which met their needs is less than ideal for retail. It's a mid-block location, not a corner site, which is always preferable, according to the retail consultants. There's little foot traffic, and even more importantly, it's on the wrong side of the street for oncoming traffic to see the signs on the building. Since opening, customers have complained that they can't find the store along busy Stevens Creek Boulevard. And to be honest, it's also hard for me to find it, even though I know it's there. If I can't find it, how will out-of-town customers find the building? Business for the Shane Company, as she indicated, is down significantly, and they need the city's cooperation to rebuild the business. I visited the store and looked at the proposed signs. They are subdued, even with lighting. This building was been problematic for many, many years. It was specifically zoned as a furniture store, but there are no longer furniture stores in Cupertino. I urge the council to unanimously approve the additional two lighted signs that Shane Company is requesting to help their business. It is council's responsibility to help, not hinder businesses in our community, particularly those generating sales tax. Now, it's my understanding that Shane Company is one of our top ten sales tax producers, even better than the top twenty-five that Danny mentioned. Other jurisdictions would be quite happy to accommodate a store of this quality. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. And we have three individuals requesting to speak virtually. Sam R., Lisa, and Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Sam.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila and City Council. Firstly, I want to say I have intimate knowledge of this location. I have two kids that go to the Dance Academy behind the Shane &amp; Co., and so I drive into this complex three or four times a week, and have done that since the time the complex is opened. But I want to say I'm intimately familiar firsthand with this location and the challenges it poses. I would like to let you know that the traffic on the right moats lane of Stevens Creek Eastbound jams up significantly as it approaches Shane &amp; Co., and there is always the concern of a tailgate and a rear end as that right turn happens. Any kind of LED signage is going to be a distraction to the traffic on Stevens Creek Eastbound, causing an increased number of potential accidents on that Stevens Creek Eastbound due to the distraction of the LED signage. Further, I want to let you know that the traffic, once inside the parking lot, is significantly heavy because of the traffic to Dance Academy. That parking lot is completely jammed in the evenings, and any kind of LED signage is a distraction and will cause that narrow lane, as it heads to the back of the parking lot, to have potential collisions because of the inability to see the traffic there. I urge the City Council to accept the good judgment of your planning commission that has done the right thing by rejecting LED signage on the eastbound side. I urge City Council members to not make a decision today. Five hundred feet is not enough public notice for this type of distraction to the apartment community on the east side as well as on the north side. I ask that you kindly direct staff to go back and have a public notice on their own, without relying on Shane &amp; Co. to perform public notice on this. The city staff need to notice on a distance that is much more than five hundred feet and make sure that the public in the apartment community to the east as well as the north are fully aware of what is happening, and they're given sufficient time to come back to you with feedback. Furthermore, I ask that you please prioritize Cupertino residents that are the apartment communities to the east and to the north, as well as the traffic of the parents that are dropping children in their cars coming into that parking lot and heading to the Dance Academy. There are young children from the age of three onwards constantly driving into that parking lot, and you're putting the lives and the good well-being of Cupertino families and young children at risk by allowing distracting LED signage here. Finally, I want to say, we were here last year under Mayor Hungvee's leadership, and we were told you will revisit the sign ordinance the next time this comes up. Please keep up your word. Do not approve this today. Revisit the sign ordinance. Do not take any action today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next, we have Lisa, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Lisa. Lisa, you'll need to unmute.
Yeah, it just popped up, my, I keep freezing. Thank you. So I'll go first. It would have been at the end of what I say, but the previous speaker mentioned the sign ordinance and the desire to have it tightened up because of the whole fiasco with public storage. So please make that happen as soon as possible, given all the other problems going on. It cannot be forgotten, just like several ordinance tightening in, in housing areas need to be tightened as quickly as possible. So I believe that staff and the planning commission made the right recommendation and decision. I don't see any reason for this body to reverse the decision made by planning commission. Yes, Shane has been here a long time. In fact, they probably didn't want to leave Cupertino, because their jingle would have to change, right? I, you know, I've been here a long time too. I don't get exceptions to the rules, nor should I, because I've been a longtime resident. The rules are the rule. And it really bothers me, actually, that there's some questions going on that seem very inappropriate. If there are six or eight businesses in that space instead of one, that, that's not relevant. What's relevant is that there's one business, and there's an ordinance for signage per business, not per the size of the building and what it could hold. It, it, it's just, it, it, again, I'll say, it's inappropriate to go down that path and spend time talking about that. That is not an argument for changing the planning commission's decision at all. And I'm sorry, and I strongly believe there should not be another lit sign. Can you imagine, as our density increases and we have buildings with apartments and townhouses and lights and coming out windows and some people not even having to adhere to dark sky because they are going to ignore it as they move forward with an old project? You know, it, it, we don't need more light. The lights on Stevens Creek would bring them in, then the sign without lights can show them where the door is. That's sufficient and per ordinance. Please do the right thing.
Thank you, Lisa. And our final speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Evening, councilmembers and staff. I want to thank Gian for going through the municipal code and saying what's allowed and whether or not they qualify. I believe that we have municipal code for a reason, and we should follow it. The planning commission made a decision and deliberated. I think that you should uphold their decision. I, I realize the chain is a big contributor and a longstanding business, and maybe behind the scenes, you can work with them, see if, within our municipal code, something can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, no further speakers?
Okay, that, that ends the public comments part of this discussion. And thank you to all the speakers who made comments today. Let's bring it back to council. And what I'd like is to start off with a motion. Is anyone ready for a motion? Okay, let's, let's go with your comments, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question for staff. Okay, so thanks to Google, we can basically drive up and down Stevens Creek Boulevard. And I was wondering, I see a sign here, another sign here, and then we have the lit sign here, and then we've got the ground sign. I can scoot up over here, go a little further. Okay, we've got a ground sign here. It's, you'll see it on the other side, I'll go back. Here's the temporary banner, and then there's the other temporary banner. Okay, so question would be, how are these not counting as signs also? They look like signs to me.
They technically wouldn't count as signs, I agree. That's what the ordinance does say. However, you know, we do have a condition approval of their ASA that once they do the modifications, that the windows would have to be, you know, transparent release without any advertisement as well.
I'm going to take that again. I didn't quite understand what you told me. Hold on. Would you please repeat that? So the question was, why, why don't those two count as signs? The other ones that are facing Stevens Creek Boulevard?
Are you speaking about the, the window signage along the, correct, yeah. So they, those would, per the ordinance, not be, they would be counted as signage, and, you know, we, we do have limitations on those. So if, if council does see fit, we can condition this to, to, to require them to remove those, the signage from the window coverings.
Had this been previously discussed at the planning commission?
Uh, no.
Okay, and do we know how tall these, these signs are? I mean, I don't want to limit their ability to advertise, and I see they have the jewelry in the window, which is, you know, designed to help bring people in. But if, if these are signs, then, then we've got one, two, three already? And then you've? I, hmm. I think this sort of changes the situation, and I, I don't really know what the intent is with regards to the business for, for these signs that they already have. So I'm, I'm a little confused, and I'd like some more guidance. And frankly, I'd like to continue the item and get some information back about this, in this situation. And maybe there should be some negotiation with the, the business and see what they would like to do if they really want to hold on to these two here, because I see these as pretty important. But now we are, we're looking at a total of five signs, so that our, our, our project has changed.
Councilmember Wei?
Yes, I would like to follow on that. Are they signs or are they not signs?
You know, the window signs are limited to a few square feet, and those are You know, the window signs are limited to a few square feet, and those are to establish, you know, whether the business is open or not. So it's within the council's right to require that the existing window coverings not have any advertisement at all consistent with the municipal code. We, you know, prior, the prior ASA, architectural site approval that was approved in the fall had a condition specifically requiring those windows along Stevens Creek to be free of any type of signage consistent with the municipal code.
Okay, so I see Shenko on the window signs. If they're just jewelry pieces, are they signs?
I would say would not count as signage.
Okay, so it's more if it's just jewelry pieces to showcase their store, it doesn't have Shenko on it, that's not signs?
I would make that interpretation that would not be signs.
Okay, understood, okay.
Councilmember Moore?
I'm kind of wondering, because of the size of this and it has the name of the company, it looks almost like a billboard, to be honest, actually, like two billboards side by side. So I am concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the images of the jewelry as a sign ordinance issue because we have seen, for instance, there was a LED moving sign that was placed inside of a business window, and then they moved it to the back wall, but it still nearly is bright and visible. So I'm concerned about this use of window space, and I have brought this up before years ago with regards to having a window and then a hallway, and then the back wall of the hallway was basically a massive sign for this particular pizza restaurant. So I'd like to know a little bit more about what your rules are regarding this kind of exterior artwork. Was this approved with these images originally?
Through the mayor, if I may. Sir John, correct me if I'm wrong. So what I'm hearing is those window signs were not allowed. So the ASA conditions require them to be removed. Whether or not the timing for removal of those sign, we could talk about it. However, I do want to remind council that what's before council today is the sign exception. I agree with councilmember Moore's assessment that it seems like there's a lot of signage going on. However, there's some signs that just cannot be allowed that you're seeing. But what is before council today are the two lit sign that qualify or potentially maybe not, if council can find the findings, to grant those exceptions. So if this is my understanding, the window signs cannot be there. It has to be a code enforcement matter that we will deal with at a later day, and we are more than happy to provide an update on the window signs.
If you look for an answer, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, councilmember Way.
Okay, so this is council deliberation, so I am going to deliberate. I want to go back to, this is a company that chooses to stay in Cupertino, and this is an area that really has, yes, is facing with, there is a, I think, a townhouse. I don't think they're apartments, but anyway, there are residents there. But I did drive by, I, as a resident, I have a hard time to find this place. And I can see two objections from one, from the public comments. One is, is it complies to our dark sky and bird safety ordinance?
So retail signage is exempt from the dark sky ordinance? And retail windows are exempt as well as from the bird safe?
Right, but this is, this sign seems to be more...
Correct, yeah. They're exempt, yeah.
Okay, but if we don't extend, then the design of it, are they compliance to our ordinance? The way it's...
Yeah, in terms of illumination, they are, they are...
Within the...
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I want to clarify that. The second is as to driving, whether it's safer to have a lighted sign to drive to back to the dance academy. If I were a parent, it's just me, I think it would be actually safer for me to see the Shenko sign and be able to drive to the back. If I were a Shenko customer, it will be safer for me to know, hey, it's there, instead of in the dark looking for, turning around. For safety reasons, I really think a demurred lighted sign to direct customers, we better have customers looking around, looking for this place. If it is as said, this place has good business from out of town, that we have a lot of out of town people who want to find Shenko, and we have dance academy kids and families driving cars, I would be very happy to say, if I were a dance academy parent, of course, I'm not, so I'm going to leave it to parents to hear the comments, I just look at a Shenko sign and turn the driver in the back, it's a dance academy. So I think speculation say that lighted signs, a demurred lighted signs like this would jeopardize the drivers and the kids. I would have a hard time to accept that, but I'll leave the parents to that, but that's just my opinion. I am more inclined to accept this ordinance as petitioner wants the exceptions. Our ordinances, yes, they are, just like the general plan, they are our ordinances, but they're not by, they're not, they can be changed, adjusted. This special location is really in the back. I went to see it, it's hard to find it, and so for the one sign that they want to ease traffic to find, I actually think it's safer for the people who want to go there and say, oh, I know it's there it is, I know where to turn around. And then to, they need that door sign in front of them. But I do want to ask one question. It is lighted with dimmer. So if there's a strong opposition from the apartments, 10 people kind of say, I can't sleep, will you be able to dim it or turn it off? Okay, so that is an option. If they're willing to spend money to have dimmers and eventually if we have strong oppositions, I think I would prefer to give Shane company a go, but have a revision after six months or a year and see if there's any objections, strong objections that you should just turn it off, no light. But that's cost you more money if that's acceptable to you. That's a question for the applicant. Okay, so that is my comment. I do believe that this place is a retail that's hard to find, and to have the dance academy in the back, lighted signs, demurred lighted signs, actually, I think it's a safer measure. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Again, so I drive past here all the time, so, and I've never missed that the chain company is there largely because, as I mentioned, I see the sign here, here on the building, it's lit at night, I've got a ground sign. There's really no way to miss it. And then when you're going westbound, this sign's lit up. This is behind here for now, but you've got a ground sign, and again, you're going to pass that. But as we know, you can't, you can't turn in, you've got to go past the building, and you're going to see all of this signage as well. I'm surprised that it came to council without having these code violations already addressed. That is surprising. It is my, to me, it's more logical because this has already caught my attention. To me, it's more logical to have the actual entrance have a sign at it. And so I would like to understand why the staff recommendation, if I understand correctly, is to have the one on this one as opposed to the more wayfinding sign back here, which lets us know where to go inside the building. Could someone please explain that?
Sure, you know, let me just first start off by saying that it's within council's discretion to approve, not to go with staff's recommendation, and as planning commission had done with the sign over, signed location number two rather than one, from, I guess, staff's discussions with the applicant as well as the logic as to the reasons why they want the exception is to encourage more foot traffic into, as a wayfinding from Stevens Creek Boulevard, it would make more sense to be on the corner rather than over the entrance itself. There, but that is part of the discretion of the council to switch it up to location two rather than location one. The recommendation, however, was left open to one of two signs along the east facade, so that includes either location as well.
Yes, go ahead, councilmember.
And with regards to the window signs that are already there, is that within our discretion to allow those, and do you have a recommendation about that either way?
So if it's okay through the mayor, if I can share the condition of approval from the ASA, I've, just to show you that we've, the staff has considered that too. If my PowerPoint's cooperating, it doesn't look like it is. Let's see, just go through here. Give me one second. Okay, if you can't read this, I can blow it up, but this is the condition of approval that I was discussing earlier about window details and bird safety. If you have a hard time reading it, I'll read out loud. All-star front windows shall be kept open and transparent to the greatest extent possible. The final storefront design and window display shall be reviewed and approved by the director of community development prior to issuance of building permits for tenant improvements. No change shall be made to the transparency of windows without the express approval of director of community development. And then goes on to talk about the bird safe development regulation requirements as well.
Pardon, through the mayor, then, we're looking at one, two, three, four, five or six windows that would all need to be transparent?
To the greatest extent possible. Understand this is a jewelry business, and having store displays of jewelry could lead to some security issues, so...
So how many of those windows would they likely have had? The director of community development agree to have opaque?
I think we would have to first see what they're proposing. It could be, I think staff is in fundamental agreement with your comments that that is signage. I think that's not just staff's interpretation, but that's what it says in the municipal code, hence, therefore, the reason why we had this condition as part of the ASA. So I think it would be as, to see what Shenko would propose. You know, you do have the Shenko staff here to maybe clarify what they think would be appropriate, and then we could take a look at it at the time.
I would like to hear that because to me, it's just the idea of having this extra sign there with all the others, it's very redundant, it's getting to be kind of visual clutter for me, and I think that the planning commission was not interested in having that front east sign either, and I can see why when we get a look at the situation. So is, if there, if anyone has some information about what the plans would be? Okay, thank you.
Part of the reason those are covered is that we don't want visibility into the showroom. However, there, we would take that down in a second if you told us that we got our signs to be completely transparent. We did this because we were trying to build visibility with the store before we had our approved tenant improvement plans, and so we were just trying to do the best we can to let people know we're there and moved in. They've been up for, since we opened the store closely after, because we were trying to figure out what to do with that space. But I will tell you right now, if they're not approved and they're not, we haven't, we're not tied to those. Those aren't, in our opinion, they're not traffic driving because they're set back, they're further, they're harder to see. It was more like we needed something for those windows. Yeah, of course.
So through the mayor, knowing this, is, does staff have a kind of a different recommendation for us? Would you like to take a minute?
Through the mayor, if I may, I think we're getting some new information. If I can take a five-minute recess and convene with CDD staff and also the applicant and come back.
Let's do that, five minutes. Thank you.
Can I ask a question first?
Go ahead. Question first.
So for the signs at the window, I think we have seen businesses where it might be a poster of like advertisement, but not really a store name. Would that be not allowed under the ASA that you mentioned? So the window has to be transparent?
Let us come back. Let us come back. Thank you.
I mean, the question is about the approved ASA.
I understand, but I do want to keep council focused because the matter before council today is the sign exception. So I would like to, if it's possible, I would like to convene with CD's team and the applicant, and we'll come back with the solution.
Okay. Yeah, let's take a break for five minutes. City manager, do you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, mayor, for allowing us to reconvene and discuss briefly. So I want to get back to some of the questions that were raised before the recess in terms of the window displacement, display, whether or not they're qualified as sign, advertisement, whatnot. I would like to clarify that I've spoke to the Shane company. So to make that go away is part of the conditions of approval that John Matier mentioned earlier in terms of city process. The Shane company has applied for an architectural and site approval to make additional exterior modification, and that approval was granted last September. Per city code, the Shane company has up to two years to finish that construction, and that window should be kept transparent and also inspected before final inspection. So technically, theoretically speaking, the Shane company has until September 2025 to remove those display. However, they have made an offer to remove those within the next three months. In addition, the banner sign that council is seeing that's on the exterior that has not been allowed, that would also be removed within the next three months. And again, this is really to show Shane company's desire to stay in Cupertino and just wanted to be part of the good company within the community. In addition to that, I would like to bring council's attention back to what is before council, which is the sign exception. So there are three proposals on the table for council to consider. One is the original staff recommendation, which is to only approve one lit sign. There is the second decision that was made by planning commission, which is to have one sign, not lit. And then there is the applicant and also the appallant Shane company's proposal to have two signs that are both lit. I would encourage council to look at the findings, and John, if you can pull the findings slide up again. Encourage this council to consider making your decision solely on making the findings as stipulated in, not this finding, as stipulated in our municipal code. So that's kind of the summary wrap, but more than happy to answer any questions.
No, I think that makes the issue clear. And while Gian is, while we're waiting for him to put the three findings, the options for us are one lit sign, one unlit sign, or two lit signs. Councilmember Moore? Oh, no, sorry, sorry. Councilmember Chow? Your light is on. And we, let's limit our discussions to five minutes.
I'm willing to consider location one as, I think, I do think that's more visible, and I don't think the destruction factor matters much. But I'm concerned with the internally lighted sign, which is mentioned in the staff report because we have seen very bright internally illuminated sign. And maybe we say it could be dimmed now. So my question would be to the staff and attorney, is it possible that we have a conditional permit for maybe one year for the lighted sign to see how it works out? And I don't know if that's even possible. I want to give them a chance to show that this will be a sign that's not too distracting, but then help with their visibility. And then in one year, we can review and say whether that would be a permanent permit to have lighted sign or not.
That will be at council's discretion.
So it's possible to have this kind of conditional permit?
There would need to be, there would need to be a process to terminate the property owners, the business's right to use the sign. So it would need to return to council or whoever the decision maker designated by council to determine if the sign could continue to be lit.
Okay, because I know that our Cupertino residents usually are very concerned about lighted sign. Given that, I think the storage unit had very bright lighted sign, people are naturally concerned. But I want to give the business a chance to show that their lighted sign is class... But I want to give the business a chance to show that their lighted sign is classic one, that people will find is actually adds ethnic value to Cupertino. Thank you.
We have deliberated on this issue in great detail. So what I'd like to do is, oh, councilmember Way, did you have a comment?
No.
Oh.
I would like to make a motion, actually.
Okay, that's where I was heading.
So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the applicant's exceptional for both signs lighted, but with councilmember Chow's, one year after the sign installed, one year, come back to the council. So this will be a temporary, however the staff wants to process it, after the sign is installed, one year, not from today, but when it's up there, come back to council within one year and we will have a review of public comments, residents' input, whether it's safer for the kids, Dance Academy kids or parents, and so we can reevaluate the situation. As you said, it's going to be dimmed, so we can actually dim it to be not lighted. That would be my motion.
So just to clarify, is it two lighted signs on the east facade?
Yes.
Is there a second?
With dimmers, so that after one year, we can reevaluate it and if it's the public comment or we can, the council can decide again.
I'll second that, but I have a friendly amendment. I think two lighted signs at once might be a bit much. I hope that to amend it as one lighted sign and one not lighted. Would you accept that? I think that's enough to have one.
I would like to try out both and get that tried out and see how it works. Okay, personally, I do believe a classic lighted sign would actually be safer for drivers to find the place at night instead of looking in the dark and looking for things. And that east-facing is, west-facing is very important because I see councilmember Moore's, you know, rendition, but that's on a computer. When you are driving and trying to look on that side through the trees to find something that's not lighted, it is, to me, it's actually uns safer to have that. So I would like to be able to try both. And then in, within one year, we can say it's too lighted, we don't want it. We can say one or two signs. We can decide whether both has to be gone, dimmed, or one or two. So give that, that option. So I would like to, hopefully, we can give them that both try out. That would be my preference.
Then I guess, well, I'll have to make a substitute motion then. I would like to have, to allow one.
Point of order, I think we have a motion on the table that has not been seconded.
Oh, then I withdraw my second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Way to have two lighted signs on the east facade. Is there a second?
Come back one year to, for revalidation.
And come back one year later for a revaluation. Is there a second? Do we have a second?
I'll wait for a second.
Shall we, councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you, and I'm going to go use the light again.
Let's wrap it up quickly, two minutes, councilmember Moore.
So the first motion, you already have a lit sign here, you can't see it as well because it is daylight, you have a ground sign. You're saying you want to have this sign lit right next to that one, redundant. And then you also want to have this sign here near the entrance, which is a very logical place to place a sign, also lit. So my substitute motion is to not have this additional sign be lit, but to have this one by the entrance lit so that customers know exactly where they're supposed to go when they drive in here. Thank you.
I'll second that, but I have a question. So do we come back and review in one year to see how the lighted sign works? Would you support that?
Yes, but I'm hearing that it has a dimmer so that it could be, already, we could work with, if we are, if we're hearing complaints from the condominiums that are, I think they're condominiums next door, then we would want to see that, we would want to see the light level reduced there.
And so this will be an internally illuminated sign rather than backlit. I would prefer backlit.
It's my understanding it would be the same as what is existing on the building. Are we hearing that it's a different design? It's going to be illuminated differently?
It's haloed. It's called haloed. It's the same design, but it's not quite as far as the thing. And it's like, we don't need power range, but not. I actually asked for our lighting designer to give us how. I actually asked for our lighting designer to give us, like, try to measure out how far that light is and he's like, it is so hard based on how little those signs actually project light, like it just, because of how they're lit. It goes out instead of forward, like the internally-lit signs. So they are less offensive than the signs you speak of, the internally-lit ones.
Okay.
And they can be dimmed, like I've said.
Okay, let's just clarify what.
The motion, yeah.
What councilmember Moore said?
I accept the friendly amendment. I have, I do have a question of our city attorney with regards to our requirements to make findings because this, this motion is to, well, actually, both motions are not the staff recommendation. What is it that we need to be doing with regards to the findings with this? Because I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, so, yes, so the, in approving the signed staff would prepare, excuse me, let me start again. In improving the, the motion, staff would prepare findings consistent with the motion based on the findings in the municipal code for a sign exception.
So that we're, we're okay with either one of these motions then with regards to the findings?
Yes, correct. Council does, does have discretion to make either one of those motions, approve either one of those motions.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a substitute motion? We do. And do we have a second for the substitute motion? That is, and the substitute motion is to, to have one lighted sign.
Where more would you like to clarify?
That's yours.
Yes, so to.
One sign above the door.
To be more specific, it would be location two, which is right at the actual entrance to lead patrons to the door, which I think is really important. And that, and accept that we would come back in a year with regards to the illumination to.
I'm okay with not adding that, yes. Given the description, yeah.
Staff would work with them if there's a problem.
If you could restate your motion.
Okay, so very clearly, that we would, the motion is that we would approve the lit sign at location two.
And keep an unlit sign in location one?
There would not be a sign at location one.
Oh, so you're talking about one lit sign?
One, to direct the patrons to the actual entrance of the, of the.
Okay.
Business, yeah.
Yes, so that's, I second that. I think because there is a really big sign facing Stevens Creek, that location one is not as necessary actually, so, yeah.
Okay, councilmember Way, you had a comment?
Yes, I actually have a question for the applicant. How important you think this west-facing sign that, that you think as a business, you know, professional?
The one that faces Stevens Creek is the, and closest to the street is our preferred location.
That's right, because I think the staff recommended that because they chat, they talked with you. You think that's even more important than the one above the door?
Yes, I think we would figure out an alternative solution to above the door. And I think, or, and/or, yes, we would figure out an alternative solution. I don't want to speak to what that would be because I don't know what's city code, but we would figure that out with city staff.
So my comment is, why are we making a motion against the business's best practice? They know their business, they are familiar with all the cities where they put their business is. And we are here to support our business, but I get it, we might, we, we don't, I guess some councilmembers say we don't like lighted signs, but this is on Stevens Creek Boulevard. It's, to me, a corner lighted sign, both sides actually adds to the visibility of it, it's more classic, it looks great as a, you know, that corner to each other, you can see from east side, from west side to find it. The, the whole purpose is find Shane Company when it's dark. And I want to repeat, I feel it's safer to have signs directing finders from out of town to find Shane Company than ask them to find something in the dark and make U-turns and things like that. To me, it is, if the business is asking for this, I don't see why councils want to contradict their best, as best, their best judgment of their business. So I would more inclined to actually reverse the substitute motion, the motion to actually get this lit sign on and not having the other sign. That is just my comment.
Yeah, councilmember Moore?
If someone would make a substitute motion to move the signage, or, I can make another.
I'm happy to, I'm thinking of making a substitute motion for the staff recommendation.
To move to.
With a lighted sign on, in location one? Do we still want to review in one year or, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Go ahead and state your motion.
So just a staff recommendation. And so the substitute motion is to approve the staff recommendation with a lighted sign on location one. But no second, no location two?
And that is the staff recommendation, right? Lighted sign?
At location one, correct.
At location one, that is the staff recommendation.
Yeah, do you second?
I would like to second that, through the mayor.
What's that?
Through the mayor, I would like to second that.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, mayor, I'm unclear. So Moore moved a substitute motion and is Chow now moving a second substitute motion? Okay, and so Moore's motion was to approve a lit sign at location two by the entrance and not have an additional sign at location one? And now Chow is approving, is moving a second substitute motion approving a lit sign at location one and not at two?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, councilmember Moore?
Yeah, so we're accepting the arguments, they made sense?
Okay, so the, the motion that we will be voting on is one lighted sign, which is location one, at location one, and no, no lighted sign on location two. Is that good?
Through the mayor, can we have a comment, a deliberation?
Okay, I'll give you one minute, councilmember Way.
So I understand the first substitute motion is because they think that's less intuitive to have a sign above their door, which is lighted but has dimmers and could be easily controlled. I am just wondering, we are a pro-business community and why don't we give them a try on both and then decide in one year that it doesn't work, it works, and they can easily not dim it? To me, I love the second substitute motion because that's what the business is preferring, but the first sign actually is less, is it sign two or something? I'm confused. The sign on, atop the door is actually necessary because if people want to find the door, I went there, it's like a warehouse, it's hard to find, where is your entrance? Why are we limiting one? Why don't we give them both and let them try it out and then decide in a year, does it work?
Councilmember Chow, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. I think we have an ordinance for a reason and it's good that we consider exception, but let's not go too far from our ordinance, otherwise it's unfair, I think, for other businesses who are following the law. So I would like to consider, to offer some concession, but not too way off from our adopted ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Moore, one minute.
Quick question for staff, is there anything, so we're looking at these doors here, is there anything that, considering they have similar doors, that would prevent them from having the word Shane put on the glass door and, you know, you know what I'm saying, just like the lettering? Is there anything in our code that would call that, that would prohibit it? Or are, do you have the ability, the discretion to allow that as, you know, as an alternative?
So typically, the ordinance does have limits on window signage. You know, the, the limits are that they would count towards the allowed square footage of signage, as we discussed earlier in the presentation, you know, the square footage is equal to the amount of, you have one square foot of signage equal to the amount of square feet and length, oh, sorry, feet in length. And that, and that window signage would count towards that square footage. Plus, you know, you are limited to 25% of window area to be covered with advertisements.
This, this wouldn't be a covering, it would be the, the actual letters on the clear glass.
Sure, I, I think if it's within two square feet, I believe you are allowed that in terms of like hours of operation, Shane Co., which is very typical of most retail establishments. You know, we did recognize the, the current situation, that's why in the ASA we had that condition that they, we have, you know, as much as possible transparency of the windows, so.
Okay. I wanted to make a, oh, go ahead.
Do I have a question for the applicant?
Okay. Okay, should I go ahead? I, I had a question, not so much a question, but I, I thought I heard the appellant say that their preferred option is to have location one lit up and that they had other options for location two, which is the entrance. I think she said you could configure it some other way or draw attention to the entrance some other way. Did I hear you right?
Yes, I mean, if you guys are going to rule that we get one sign, we're going to say we want the one closest to Stevens Creek. Obviously, we came in with two, wanting two signs for a reason because we do believe it's important to tell our patrons where to enter the building. But like I said, I think we could potentially come up with something that city would approve that would help indicate where, where our front doors are.
And you would have some other design or configuration for the entrance?
Yeah, we'd work with city on what is allowed and approved.
Great, thank you. Vice mayor, through.
Yeah, I have a follow-up question on exactly that point. Sorry to drag you back up. Do you have any?
Getting in my steps. My watch is dead, so.
Do you have any initial thoughts on what, what sort of thing that might be as a substitute?
I do. I, we talked about a potential awning with our logo on it. That is a potential idea.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are you going to say something, councilmember?
Yes, but what is your preference?
Two lit signs would be our preference. When I look, you know, we have sign, a lot of signs in other stores, we get this approved. I have to be honest, I'm a novice here, it's the first time we've had to do this. But, so our preference would be the two signs that we came in with because we believe that's what the business needs.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say one more thing. Why are we making our business challenging to make an awning with a sign? Just, okay, that's my comment.
Councilmember Chow?
I want to say, I think the staff, I think you guys did a really good job and really found a right balance and I didn't recognize that, I want to say thank you. And we are, the, the second substitute motion is already more than what the Planning Commission approved, so we are actually, is going, already allowing more than Planning Commission and, yeah, thank you.
Vice mayor?
Yeah, so on balance, I would prefer two signs over an awning, so for me, that, that's fairly critical. I ran retail stores for close to a decade before changing careers, so I have, I have some notion of where you're sitting right now and it's terrible to see a bunch of people second guessing what your judgment might be. And all told, I generally agree with councilmember Way on this topic. And all told, I, I generally agree with Councilmember Way on, on this topic. So we will see where, where votes land.
Okay, so we will now, oh, Councilmember Moore.
And with regards to an awning, that is something that they are allowed to have with their name on it?
I, I don't know if that's part of the scope and I really hate to bring us into a hypothetical. If that is part of the scope from the applicant, we'll definitely look into and give you an answer.
Thank you, it's more of a sign question, if it counts, why that would?
Until we see the plan, sorry, the planners are really based on plans.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, we have a motion that we need to vote on, which is the second substitute motion, where we, the motion is to go with one lit sign, location one, a sign at location two, but not lit.
No, no sign.
No sign?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, no sign.
The city code doesn't allow any sign and we are allowing already one and usually it's not lit, we are allowing it to be lit.
Got it, it's a staff recommendation, which is one lit sign.
Yeah, it's already an exception from a lot of what we allow other businesses to do, yeah.
Okay, let's vote by lights for the substitute, second substitute motion.
The second substitute motion carries with Way and Fruin voting no.
Okay, do we need a break, are we good? Okay, let's go, move on to item number seven, the action calendar, which is revisions to city commission and committee administration, procedure and governance, including an ordinance to regularize commissioner appointments and revise commissioner qualifications and resolutions adopting revisions to advisory bodies' appointment process and commissioner's handbook. Okay. Is there a staff report, city manager?
Yes, I, I, I will be providing the report. So let me share my screen again. So, hello again, mayor, members of the city council. So we are here today to discuss a variety of revisions to the ordinances and policies governing the city's commissions and committees. This was, is being presented as part of a commission governance reform package that was identified as a priority in the fiscal year 2324 work program. And, and the priorities were to revise the commissioner's handbook, review potential mission code violations by city commissioners, realign and regularize commissioner terms and establish or revise commissioner qualifications. This item addresses, the priorities one, three, and four. Number two was previously addressed in Lynda Dobbie's report in May 2023. Council is being asked to consider adopting an ordinance to regularize the time of appointment for, for city commissions, a resolution revising the rules governing of appointments for city advisory bodies, and a second resolution adopting a revised commissioner's handbook. In developing the proposed ordinance and policy updates, staff considered prior council direction, the, the city, both be of the city work program and, and other considerations such as recommendations by the city's internal auditor. First, I consider an ordinance to address commissioner terms as well as commissioner qualifications. In your packet, there are, there are clean and redlined versions of an ordinance that would contain both uncodified provisions that would ensure that commissioner vacancies are, are, occur at regular intervals biannually, beginning in 2025. The, the ordinance also includes amendments to chapters 286 and 294 that would remove business representatives from the housing and sustainability commissions. This is being recommended by staff because these positions have been historically difficult to fill and difficult to recruit for a, a deep and qualified pool for candidates, of candidates for council's consideration. The, the, the first resolution that, that you will also, that's also for, under consideration in this item, addresses advisory bodies' appointments. The current resolution dates to 2016, it needs a variety of updates. The resolution in your packet provides for removal of commissioners who fail to make training or conflict of interest requirements, consistent with our discussion earlier this evening. It also establishes a process for developing subject matter qualifications for commissioners that would require the, the, the city manager to develop qualifications for specific commissions. That said, council would importantly retain the ability to identify and, and interview any commissioners that would apply, and any council member could select a commissioner for interviews. So this is really just to try to have some level of screening for qualifications before council has to go through interviewing candidates, but it would 100% preserve the ability of any council member to select anybody in the candidate pool to interview. So just, you know, so, so it's, you know, within council's discretion to go in that direction or not, but it's, it's, it's attempting to have some sort of regularization of the qualification and interview processes. The, the, this, this item would also end the practice of appointing alternative commissioners and, you know, that, that is, is being done to ensure that the city complies with all notice requirements for appointing commissioners. It, and finally, there would be revisions to reflect changes in administrative procedures, largely administered by the clerk's office, and, and casting would be available if there are specific questions regarding those procedures. And then finally, the second resolution that's being presented is, would adopt resolution to the commissioner's handbook. These reservations, these recommendations would clarify the role of the city clerk's office and the city attorney's office in the administration of commissions and committees. It would clarify commissioner's roles, roles in the city work program process. Again, there would be a new process for developing commissioner qualifications in, 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 in the handbook, and there are revisions to ensure consistency with the council procedures manual and the ethics code that were adopted last year. So just to summarize, the recommended action is to conduct the first reading of the, the ordinance and adopt resolutions to repeal and replace the current resolution regarding city advisory bodies and revising the commissioner's handbook. And with that, I will take questions.
Okay, let's, let's have questions for the city attorney. Five minutes per council member. Councilmember Chow?
Oh, yeah, so sorry that I couldn't find time, that we both have time to meet before the meeting. So a question, if the council does not appoint alternates, what happens when a member resigns or is removed?
So the city clerk would initiate a recruitment process for a new member.
So anytime someone resigns, we will start a new recruiting?
That, that, that's correct.
Oh, and so what's the legal, so the current process of appoint or alternate? I understand that if they are just appointed, it might not comply with current procedure, but what if we appoint them at the council meeting, does that still not comply with the procedure?
So I, I'm recommending that council go through the, the notice process for, 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 for each individual appointment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore, sorry. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so I'm looking at attachment C under the interviews and appointments, page, page 3B, and it's, my concern is about the, the city manager or their designees shall establish criteria for service on each commission. Is there, am I missing some of that being fleshed out in this document? Or did you see this in another city? What will be the base, the basis for reference for coming up with this? And you're, you're going to need to do this for all, all the committees, some, like, like, could I have an example for the planning commission? What would, what would that look like, the criteria there?
Pamela, would you like to address that question?
Sure, so for instance, the planning commission, we will make recommendation that the qualification could be in selected fields, civil engineering, landscaping architect, architecture, planning, if you will, or council can also expand that criteria, but it should come in at a candidate that they can do the job as the commissioner. So for audit committee, we definitely want somebody from the finance or budgeting area. You don't want a civil engineer who's serving on audit committee and vice versa. And right now, we don't have those criteria set for any of the commission.
Okay, and have, and through the mayor, have you seen this in other cities where they've had, had that? Okay, so you have a basis of something, could, could you mention a city so I could, you know, look at that a little bit? And, and then will we, is there any mechanism here where we should have some, some daylight about what your criteria are and so that we can look at that at some point and say, yeah, this looks, this looks good, we should be able to have, have that input? Is that in, is that going to happen with the way this is, has been written? Or we won't know until we do our interviews, what was, what was the criteria?
So if I understand the proposal accurately, we will, so city manager's office will be preparing those criteria, qualification, if you will, for these candidates. We'll use that as a screening tool for all the candidates who qualify for that position. And then we will forward those candidates who have the sound position or, or qualification to council for the final interview.
And, and through the mayor, since I still have some time, I don't need to say that actually, they, I would assume that since you're creating some criteria, that the applicants would know what those, what the criteria were before they even bothered applying?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, because that would help everybody have some sense of that. But I would like to have council have an opportunity to, to look at it in case anything looks quite unusual, but I also don't want to open up a can of worms where we are micromanaging the criteria list and we end up, right, because we could go, we could spend a lot of time on that. So if there was some way that we could maybe in a memo, look at it?
Sure.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
So which cities already have these criteria that's determined by the city manager?
We will look into and provide that information to you in, in a follow-up memo.
Um, I am concerned of this, um, so I, I appreciate that we need to know more about the background of the commissioners we interview. I actually appreciated that one year, most of them submitted one page or even longer resume, so we can learn about more of their background. It may or may not be specifically to a city. I think we're not hiring a city staff, we are getting community members to provide feedback. So what do we need? We, we rely on the staff for your expertise, but we rely on commissioners for their outreach and bringing the diverse point of view from the community, which often the city staff couldn't provide. So I'm concerned of what this criteria mean to, in terms of the, really the goal of a commission, whether it maybe, it may not even meet the goal of the commission. So until I see a proposed criteria, I hope we don't adopt any change in the commissioner's handbook to move towards that direction. So please provide that memo in a future meeting and references to how other cities have done it would be really helpful, thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Way?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan, so back to no alternate and the recruiting process. I know right now we interview in January and the commissioners start their appointment in February?
Right away in January.
Right in January, so maybe we could have a procedure, so it's not every month we, somebody resigns, we're doing a recruitment, maybe every three months, a quarter, we do a quarter recruitment together, would that be a good process?
Yeah, I think, I, I, I mean, that's not spelled out in, in the documents in front of you, but I think, I think the, the clerk's office would want to, to batch candidates together, if only because the process of gathering council for interviews is fairly cumbersome, so I, I think we would have to work through that.
Absolutely, that, that's good because we don't want to be always having meetings, interview one position.
Right.
So maybe a quarterly interview or even a half year, that depends on your staff's recommendation. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
As a follow-up, do you think that that sort of batching would be consistent with the MADDI Act because it has some rather prescriptive timeframes in it? There are some limits, I think. We would have to work through the details, I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, I, I don't want to give a, a frequency, but, but yes, I, I understand that, the concern. Got it, okay. Do we, through the mayor, to the city manager, do we have a notion of how many resignations we've actually had in the last, say, year?
I would say maybe one or two.
Okay.
It's very rare. I mean, I got to come in, our commissioners who are signing up for the job and also putting the extra time in a community to eat, granted, incidents do happen, so it is not a usual circumstances.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you.
I had a question on number three, and I know I asked this of staff, so if you could repeat, repeat it for, for my re-education. The city attorney's office recommends ending the appointment of alternate commissioners to ensure transparency. And I think if I heard you right, Mr. City Attorney, you said there was a, some kind of a state regulation which, which?
Yeah, we, we just want to make sure that, that, that all notice requirements are fully complied with, yes.
Okay, so that's the state regulation?
Yeah, we, it, 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 yes, that's correct.
Yeah, Councilmember Moore?
I have a question regarding having a chair of a commission have a staff member, perhaps their liaison, cancel a meeting without notice to the chair? Or what is the chair's realistic ability to put an item on their agenda? And is that something that staff can just not do? What, what are the, what are the rights of the chair, really?
Of course, so just like the mayor and the city manager mutually agree on the agenda, we expect all the commission liaisons to have that conversation with their respective mayor, chairs, to understand what can come to the next meeting. I don't know if there's any hierarchy in terms of who makes the final decision, I would respect that to be a mutual understanding. It's a collaboration so that both the chair and staff understand what commission wants to see and the commission understand what business needs to come to the commission to, to move along city operation. So I would respect that to be a mutual understanding in terms of a hierarchical order.
Okay, but that, it's not really spelled out in the handbook, is it, for?
So there, there are a couple of provisions. With, with respect to cancellation, the handbook does, this is in the current handbook, it's, and this is unchanged in the proposed revisions. A meeting may be canceled by the staff liaison in consultation with the chair if there is no commission business to be conducted. So, so that, so that, that, that envisions the collaborative process that Pamela was referring to with respect to. respect to determining what, what business is to be conducted, there are agenda setting provisions. And they do, they do envision that, you know, the liaison and the chair work together to set the agenda. There is a proposed provision in those provisions, which is consistent with the, the current council procedures that, that, that their city manager or their designee would need to approve any, you know, and in this case, the designee would most likely be the liaison, would need to approve any item that requires preparation of a staff report. And that just grows out of the idea that, you know, neither the chair nor, you know, and the commissions as a whole, really direct staff work. But, you know, setting that aside, you know, it really should be a collaborative process between the liaison and the chair. And I think, you know, not speaking too much for Pamela, but I think that communication is a point of emphasis with our, our liaisons at this point.
Okay. Thank you. So, but there has, there have been instances where there has been some conflict between the chairs and the, and the liaison. And we've had instances of a chair making their own report so that something could get heard. It's happened in the past. And, and there have been instances where meetings have been canceled without that consultation, or when that, that chair was wanting to have something put on the agenda and then the meeting still got canceled. So for instance, there, some of the housing meetings, there was some, some desire to have things on the housing element as an example, which didn't come to pass. So there's, there, there have been these, these issues. And then what does, what is the chair to do if they have a grievance? Who do they go to?
I, I think this goes back to what Chris was saying. This is really a collaborative effort, right? So the housing element was under review. Whether or not the housing commission chair wanted to have the housing, the housing element coming to the housing commission for a review. It, it really depends on staff workload. And I hope, and I, I'm almost confident that the staff had a conversation with the house, with the housing commission chair. If there's a disagreement, if there's a disagreement, I wish that they would contact me.
So perhaps that could be something that gets spelled out as this conversation goes on.
I wish that we don't have to put the principle into the manual. So hopefully staff will understand to contact me. So, and before this get to councils matter.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Frun?
To echo some of that, I, I think that it would just be well advised to maybe have a conversation in general with all of the staff liaisons and all of the chairs about sort of what's to be expected, what, what is appropriate for agendizing, what might not be. So that there's an honest expectation that is understood on, on everybody's part. And I think the analogy is, is well placed that even for the mayor and the city manager, this is a, a two-way street, right? And conflict can arise. So I, I guess the question is, can we perhaps in addition to everything else that is, that may come of this hearing, if we could perhaps give you some added direction to go back and have those conversations so that people don't feel like they're being ignored?
That's certainly council's discretion. And just kind of add to along the spirit of wanting more training and education. So we've held a mandatory orientation for all of the commissioners about a week or so ago. I was present at that meeting and made myself available for all of the commissioners, chairs, vice chair to have a conversation, open conversation. I'm also having an internal discussion with all the liaisons next week, reemphasizing the same spirit. But then again, I appreciate the thought. So this is completely up to council. If, if spilling out this extra alternative method is completely within council's discretion.
Got it. I, I, what I think I'm trying to convey is that there is a genuine sense that is probably not just mine, but might be shared by the rest of my colleagues. And I'd welcome hearing from them on the topic, that, you know, there's a bunch of people who are very enthusiastic. They apply to these commissions. They want to be able to contribute something to the city. They have various points of view. You become chair and you want to be able to, to do something and, and drive some useful policy change and have your, your say and so forth. And I want to make sure that we're able to harness that energy rather than creating needless animosity. Yeah.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So I'm just going to follow that conversation and ask our city manager Pamela, you are open for council, for commissioners, council members, anyone to approach you and to really build this culture of collaboration. We're in this together. We're stronger together. We couldn't, we sometimes will agree to disagree, but you'll carry out the spirit of, you know, being that collaborative and bring that to the staff and to the commissioners. So this is our city to serve. We all serve with our passion. But that spirit of collaboration and giving and take, it's there. So I, I think, I'm going to ask you a question. Is that preferable than setting a rule set, who gets the final say?
Um, if I have a choice, yes, that is more preferable, but it's completely council's discretion. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
So I envision the commission's work similar to the council in terms of agenda setting, in terms of canceling meetings. The council together adopt the calendar for the year. If anything is canceled, it's a collective decision. And agenda setting too is not just the mayor working with the city manager. Individual council member, two council members can propose the item and then way together they will look at the to-be-de-list. And I remember Parks and Rec years ago had a really good practice. Beginning of the year, they have a list of topics, potential items, potential time to cover in each meeting. And then from, in the, from the beginning of the year, they have a feel of what will be at each meeting. If some meetings have free time, come, all the commissioners can propose items to discuss, as long as they don't take extra staff time. That's what I would envision the commissioners can do collectively. So it's not really just between chair and the staff liaison. It's the commission, the entire commission work together. The chair is only helping with the administrative process, but not the sole decision maker in terms of, in terms of agenda setting. That's what I envision. Thank you. And so my question is, is that something that could be supported by staff?
So, I mean, the, the existing commissioner's handbook has a, a future agenda item setting practice that's similar to what council uses and that, that, you know, two commissioners can propose future agenda items. Most, if, if not all, uh, commissions do have a future agenda item, uh, uh, place for consideration in their order of business. So, so that, that process is similar. With respect to the, the cancellation of meetings, you know, we just discussed sort of how, how that works operationally. It's not directly parallel to council meetings because, you know, council, to a certain extent, sets the schedule for, for regular meetings for, for commissions. I mean, not all of them, but, but many of them, it's set by, by ordinance. And, and then, you know, there, there are situations where, where there is, is no commission business to be conducted for certain meetings and that, you know, that there's a cause for cancellation there that I think basically never happens with our regular council meetings.
So can we enable, empower the commission as a whole to decide if they, this commission, maybe Parks and Rec would like to collectively decide that they set the schedule and any cancellation would be determined on a commission agenda? And a commission could choose not to do that. But if collectively that's something they want to do, can we allow them to do that?
Uh, you could. I wouldn't recommend it, if only because you, you might wind up with, with being unable to, to cancel commission meetings in advance where there's no business to be done.
I think the commissioners would decide if they have business or not, right?
Well, there would have to be something on the agenda.
Yeah. Okay.
I had a quick comment. Often, I'm, I'm sure you addressed this in your meeting last time, last week, city manager Wu. But commissioners don't have a clear idea of what it is that they're supposed to do. Everything relating to parks and recreation is not necessarily a Parks and Rec commissioner's responsibility. So I think there's a lot of, you know, unclear and confusion about what their responsibilities are. And I, and I'm assuming that you addressed some of that at your meeting last week.
I'm going to answer this very carefully. I, I don't know if I agree with the statement that the commissioners don't know what to do. But I, I do commend on the spirit and also the dedication. And I do have two commissioners in the audience and two chairs. So I'm going to be very careful. But I think all of the functions and responsibilities and powers are spilled out in our municipal code for each of the commission. Parks and Recreation Chair, I met. She's fully aware of her responsibilities. But I think there's some cultural improvement in terms of organization from staff and the commission that we can certainly work on. This collaboration spirit of what is on the agenda, what should come to commission and, and the order of what comes to commission, then council or vice versa. I think there's a lot of room for improvement. If you can indulge me to work on that, and this is really my 2024 year of plan, to work with the commission and staff in the community to have that understanding. What's spilled out in the code is black and white. And there's a lot of interpretation how to make it work. We want to make sure the commissioners feel valuable, appreciated for the work that they do. And also understand that most of our commission, and I say most with the exception of planning commission, their advisory to council. So there's a, there is a fine line between making recommendation or versus making decision. So with that, I really truly appreciate for all the commissioners who are listening or are here, for your hard work. And I, I, I speak on staff part. I think there's a lot of work that we can come together from both side and really do the good things for the city.
Yeah. Any other comments? So we should actually invite the public to come up and make their comments. Are there any cards and?
Yes, Mayor. I have two requests to speak in community hall. I see two hands raised virtually currently. So Jennifer Griffin and Carol Stanek have submitted requests in community hall. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. This item has caused me a great deal of trauma. I have still not recovered from what happened last year where we had three standing long-term committees that were wiped out within one month. That's the Legislative Review Committee, the Environmental Review Committee, and the Design Review Committee. There are other cities that still have these same committees. I attended all of these. So I took a punch to the gut. This was a lot of my time. And I'm still traumatized by it. I don't trust anyone anymore. I believe that HCD, since they were beginning to micromanage things in Cupertino, had told the city, we had to get rid of those three committees to get our certification. Well, we're still here, 15 months later, a year later, no certification. I believe that HCD told, told this to the city. It has happened in other cities. I won't name the cities, but you probably know who they are. I don't like HCD micromanaging my city. It's unethical. It's undemocratic. And I think that they're beginning to tell the city again, you have to do these things. You have to change your committees. You have to do all these things to get your certification. I don't believe any of it. I do not trust HCD. They are micromanaging the guts out of my city. I'm led to believe this because of what happened. We also had a highly traumatic removal of a long-term commissioner in a circus of a city council meeting. And it was also broadcast on social media, simulcast. I find that disgusting. It is abhorrent. And I hope that it never happens again. This is why I do not trust HCD and what they are trying to do to our city. On that regard, never mind HCD. I don't think that it's appropriate that the city council is not determining who's goes on the committee. We had a dentist on the planning commission a number of years ago, and she did a lovely job. Just because someone is a dentist doesn't mean that they shouldn't be on the planning commission. I don't have a background in library, but why shouldn't I be on the library committee? I, I think that we're micromanaging this to the point that we're shutting the public out. Please think on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Carol Stanek, followed by David Fung, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney. I've served on the Parks and Recreation Commission for a lot, number of years, and I'm delighted that the council is revising the commissioner's handbook to bring increased accountability and clarity to the role of commissioner. It is unfortunate, but necessary, that the consequences for incomplete training or reporting be included in our handbook and policies. The proposed requirements, as stated in the draft resolution and the handbook, unfortunately are incomplete and inconsistent. A few changes are recommended, and I, I understand that talking to the words can get confusing, as we saw a little bit earlier tonight. But I'll try to do this and hopefully you'll understand. I did send this in an email so that you could see it. I think we need to update the requirement for completing training stated in the handbook where it says, each member should complete training. It should say each member must complete all training. Why are we saying should? That's just a fuzzy word. And in the handbook, it says, required by state or federal law or by city rule or policy. That's the only place it says that. It doesn't say that in the resolution. For, for being removed from the commissions, it's, it limits it to all legally required training. Why are we limiting the removal process to only legally required training? We have lots of training. We have the, the orientation mandated training. We have the cybersecurity training, really important things. What if ethics training becomes not legally required? Don't we want all commissioners to be trained in that? And shouldn't be, shouldn't the consequences for not taking this training be removal? It should be clear and it should be all the training that we value. The timeframe should be limited and clearly spelled out for how long it would take to remove someone. We should also specify that commissioners who have not completed the mandatory training by the initial due date may not participate in commission business. If they have not taken the time to do the training, they should not be doing the commission business until they have completed that training. It's an opportunity for them. We should also specify that any missed meetings due to delinquent training or reporting will be marked as an absence per the policy. So I think it's important, this is not to be punitive. This is to recognize that this is very important and to have commissioners really step up and understand that they're taking on this responsibility. And it's, it's important for the council, the commission, for the community to have commissioners who are fully trained and on board with it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next we have David Fung, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Louise Sadadi. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm the new chair of the planning commission. This is my second term on the planning commission and I also had previously two terms on the Parks and Rec Commission. I'd actually like to thank the city staff. I think that in the time that we've been there, some of the issues that have been raised around the charter and, and the operation of the commission, that has always been variable in the past. And a lot of that, and I think this speaks a little bit to what Carol just talked about. You know, there is training available. There's a lot of availability from the staff. I've always found the staff was available to answer questions and clarify issues. So, you know, really encourage people to take advantage of that. Of course, everybody is different in the way that they want to do that. But I think that in particular, I would really salute Michael, PU, and Ben, who've all been very, very open about, you know, how they want, how they'd like to see the, the commission run. I think last year, the planning commission, it's often noted that we had, you know, a lot of meetings that we, you know, a lot of scheduled meetings, which didn't happen. a lot of meetings, a lot of scheduled meetings, which didn't happen. They were for lack of business. I think that we've had the discussion, we've already had the discussion around some of these things, around, you know, meeting cancellations and how we agendize things. And you already see these actions, even in our, just in our last meeting. There was a, you know, Michael has tried to provide some additional information on how we would do this, you know, the proper way to agendize items. And, you know, so I hope that we will continue to be effective and have smooth operations in future. Once again, I thank you and the staff for, you know, creating an environment where we can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. I hadn't really planned on speaking, but I decided to step forward as a former library commissioner and make a few comments. First of all, I'd like to commend the council and the staff for pulling together this handbook. It really has, the accountability and processes have really evolved a lot since I was on the commission, and that's positive. Because I have seen commissions literally go off the rails, and there didn't seem to be any controls over it. They were working on things that were totally outside their purview, and there didn't seem to be any controls over that. With regard to this particular iteration, I do have one item that I had sent in an email earlier that I think you need to reconsider, which is the elimination of the business representative on the Housing Commission. Yes, remove the business representative, but allow, not require, a commissioner who could represent a multi-unit housing complex in Cupertino. As we build up more multifamily units, as we have senior housing, BMR housing, things like this, those voices are also needed. And remember, I think it's something like 40% of Cupertino residents are renters. And at this point, the Housing Commission, I think, is all owners. No, I take that back. This time, we appointed, you appointed one who was a renter. But the management of those unit, those multi-unit complexes is going to become more important. I don't think you want to require one of them, you know, one member to be that manager because it's a recruitment problem. There's only a handful of complexes. But if someone comes forward, and you do have an excellent housing commissioner who is just newly appointed, that's important. So please don't completely eliminate that and require that all the commissioners live in Cupertino. We know a lot of our community does not live, our business community, our housing community management does not live in Cupertino. They can't afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And next, we have Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Louise.
Hello. So regarding the commissioners and the chairpeople of the commissions, I've had the opportunity to meet with quite a few of them. And I have been very impressed with the dedication, the intellect, and the experience of these people that have been chairpersons, vice chairs, and commissioner. And they have a dedication to the city and are willing to put their time and energy with even less money than the council people receive per month, you know? So I think that they should be listened to and welcomed to join the staff and the council in progressing our city. They have a lot of knowledge, and these people are unique in the experience that spans decades. And it can really help the melding of our city staff with the city council, with the commissioners. Previously, under the previous council, the city staff were very battered and told to report directly to council and got into the habit of avoiding, just going directly to council. But now we need to go back into a normal functioning city where you actually have city staff welcoming the input of the commissioners and especially the chairpersons and vice chairs. They're a tremendous resource. I would like to ask you to welcome and incorporate their input. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And we have five people virtually requesting to speak. Seema Linskog, Tessa Parish, and Jennifer Sharon to begin with. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Respected Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fuhrin, and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I want to start by thanking the staff and the council for working to update the Commissioner's appointment and government process as well as the Commissioner's Handbook. It is important work and very much needed. However, I am concerned that the amendments included in the two proposed resolutions today have been put forward without much outreach or discussion with any commissioners. There's two specific points I'd like to make. One is about the commission members needing to represent the community. I agree with Councilmember Chow's comments on this. I don't believe that residents should have to meet special qualification requirements beyond being a resident of the city. The job of a commissioner is to represent the average, normal residents of the city, just ordinary residents, and you really don't need special qualifications for that. We've had excellent commissioners in the past who've come from a variety of backgrounds. And I think as Councilmember Chow pointed out, they submit their resume, and this allows the council to choose the candidates that they think will have the most relevant experience. So the process is working right now. On the second point, I agree with Councilmember Moore's comments about the importance of the chair's right to agendize items. The proposed language around a shared collaborative decision-making process between the chair and the staff liaison is not working, honestly, and it just creates very confusing ambiguity. I understand the concern is to ensure that each commission focuses on only the topics that are within the scope of its responsibilities. But while the language says that the chair and the liaison need to work in partnership, the practical reality of it right now is that the chair cannot agendize anything without approval of the liaison, who can veto any item. So it's an unequal partnership with a de facto hierarchical order. The solution is to allow the chair to agendize items, but to hem in the scope of allowable topics to only those that are specifically within the purview of the commission. So this would allow the commissions to do their job, which is to represent the voice of the residents in providing advice to the council. Thank you for your time and for everything you do for the city.
Thank you, Seema. Next, we have Tessa Parish, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi. Hi there. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you might know, I was in the Housing Commission, part of the Housing Commission. And I do appreciate the clarifications to the manuals and to the rules of the commissioners. I have to tell, definitely adding items to the agenda is a problem. And if you clarify it, like city manager said, where it's collaborative and you can talk to people all the way up to the city manager. When we be, as you all know, the more recent one was when I was trying to get something on the housing element. That wasn't the first time I was trying to get something on the agenda. When I first became a commissioner, I had to wait three months just to add to our meeting agenda the discussion of adding an item to the agenda as part of our regular agenda. Every time I brought it up or the commissioners, you know, collectively wanted to add it, we were told, that's not on the agenda, you can't discuss that. And luckily, we were able to communicate, I was able to communicate it to the previous council. Previous council corrected the manual to be able to add that to the agenda. But that's how micromanaged the commission was. And furthermore, almost everything that was coming to the Housing Commission only said, for today, it's only receive the presentation. I mean, it's an advisory role, but our advice was rarely asked for. And even when it was on any of the items like the CBDG or, you know, approval of the funds, et cetera, it only came to us after it was like, it has to be approved today, otherwise it cannot be, it won't meet the deadline. So if there was any questions about the funds or any questions about the receipts, that was not, we weren't given the time to do that. So it's pretty much like, here it is, we're just going to do it to give you, say we did it, and it was presented to you, but you have no role. You're just going to accept this. That was the action item. So it was, you know, pretty much nothing to do. And so I really wanted to see if you guys could add that to your manual and clarify that point. Thank you, Seema. All your points about that were beautiful about the qualifications. I can't imagine even having to, it's hard enough finding commissioners to volunteer. Also, being able to bring something up to them is very necessary. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Tessa. Next, we have Peggy, Jennifer Sharon, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Mohan, and staff. Again, I'm the new Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and I'm speaking tonight as myself only. I wish to second everything that my fellow Commissioner Carol Stanek said this evening. I agree. I want to thank you very much for these much-needed updates to the handbook. It's very important that the handbook require all mandatory as well as legally required training to be considered part of being a commissioner. Specifically, there should be consequences for not completing all mandated training, and those consequences should be specific. At the very least, they should not participate in commission activities until the training is complete. I also agree with Commissioner Linskog that there currently isn't an equal partnership, as mentioned previously, between the Chair of Commissions and the staff liaison when it comes to agendizing items. I ask you to clarify the language so as to allow chairs to agendize items for discussion, not for anything that requires a staff report, but merely for discussion. Thank you again for your work on behalf of Cupertino. Good night.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. As just noticed, several commissioners and chairs have spoken. And obviously, this item has not been presented to their commissions. I would have thought that this would have been gone through them first and provided feedback, but it wasn't, it came directly to council. It should be thrown back and sent to them. I agree with Jean Bedord's comment about businesses, all commissions live in Cupertino. I also agree in the ordinance, attachment B, do not remove a Cupertino-based business. Instead, we need their inputs and perspective. A compromise would be to allow a Cupertino resident with a business owner elsewhere. But don't remove the business owner. Add that members can't be people who could profit from the decisions of their commissions. Attachment D, I agree with the training and conflict of interest clause. I think that's very important. If paperwork isn't submitted on time, they should be automatically removed or given consequences. I do not agree with having the city manager or designee select the valid applicants. I agree with the commissioners. Residents provide a unique perspective. This is not a job, it's a commission. And this is a democracy where you are a combination of checks and balances. So the comments from Jean Bedord, Seema, Jennifer Sharon, these are obvious comments from commissioners that have experienced, and Tessa Parish. They've experienced the frustrations of being on a commission and being ignored. Please listen to them. I also, let's see, agendas. No agenda item requiring preparation of a staff report may be scheduled without approval of the city manager. There are many items that can be discussed within a commission meeting without requiring a staff report, needs to be defined. The work program, do not change will to may. Why are we deleting the annual report of the progress of each commission? We want to know what they're doing. Please, send us back to the commissions for input and come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker that had their hand raised within the allotted time is San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila, and council members. It is no surprise that everyone that has spoken today in support of this agenda item are current or past commissioners that have had the support and endorsement of the current council majority. Let me give you a perspective from the other side. I have applied three times and been rejected all three times, despite perhaps being one of few more regular attendees at council meetings as well as commissions. Despite being one of the few residents that perhaps reads all your agenda items, reads all of the attachments, and gives you input where appropriate for the purpose of maintaining your stakeholder engagement. Let me give you the perspective from the other side. It is disheartening and disappointing to see partisan appointments to commissions that should be encouraging participation of your stakeholders. Commissions should not be an extension of council elections. Commissions should not be taking sides on which residents supported which council members and therefore deserve an appointment. Commissions should not be scenarios where magically the majority clicks the same three candidates for selection, many of whom may be repeat members of the public that are returning to council appointments. Where is the equity? Where is the opportunities for first-time attendees? I would like to ask you to please not make it any harder for new residents to participate in the process of civic democracy. I would ask you to not approve these changes that apply further hurdles in the path of participating in what is our city. City staff have a track record of nearly 100% recommendations since the last election of endorsements or city recommendations that do not align with resident input that you receive most of the time. And now we're asking the same city staff to say they get to choose who comes in front of you for interviews. I also want to point out really quickly that you have a scenario on the Planning Commission where the commissioner was removed and replaced. And that replacement has a term ending this January 2025, which with this change will now be extended to January 2027, thereby giving a Planning Commission majority to the appointees from the current council majority. Sure, the city council majority changed in this election. That appointment that was supposed to end in 2025 will now have tenure until 2027. Please do not make this change. Please allow for new candidates that are interested in.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Mayor, no further speakers on this item.
Okay, the public comments section has ended. Thank you to everyone who participated today. Let's bring it back to council and for discussion. Each council member has five minutes, and we will start with Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. I'm concerned about the information about having this handbook and go to the commissions for input. So what was the all-commissions meeting going over that we just had? I don't see pages of their input and change. I don't see pages of their input and changes to this handbook. So did that happen or not?
It was meant, sorry, it was mentioned at the training to solicit feedback from the commissioners. So after the training, they can take their time reviewing the document and provide comments to council. We received several.
Okay, but we didn't actually take the handbook and put it on the agenda for each one of these commissions to have a more thorough review going through it like we're doing tonight. They didn't have that opportunity. It's just, it's come to us.
That's correct. Understanding is this is a council adopted policy.
Yes, but it's the rules that they basically need to live by, and I personally would want to hear if it works for these commissioners or not. To me, that's valuable.
I understand.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we can come back with a, we can come back with a motion. Vice Mayor Fruen.
So what would the mechanism be by which someone who doesn't fulfill all of the staff-identified criteria as a potential candidate for a commission position to be identified by a council member instead and added to the interview process? What would the mechanism be by which that would be accomplished?
So council would obviously need to be provided a list of all applicants and have the ability to pick from that list if there was an applicant that did not meet the criteria. And again, each individual council member would have the ability to pull anybody from that list for an interview.
Got it. So in other words, we would still be presented with all of the applications?
Yes.
And we would still have the opportunity to say, you know, this seems like an interesting person. I'd like to actually have us interview them.
That is correct.
Are there any comments? Otherwise, we could, okay, Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So my comment and question is about residency. I do recognize we have people who don't live here, maybe work here or has expertise that could contribute to our commissions. For example, we just appointed Ryan, who is the exec director for, yeah. And then he doesn't live here, but he has that expertise to work in a housing commission. So I wonder, is it, could he be flexible? We can say that the council could appoint one out of five commissioners to be a non-resident. Could, doesn't mean we have to. Is it a language that could be incorporated into the criterias?
Yes, so commissioner qualifications and particular housing commission qualifications are agendized, so if council wanted to address those, they could this evening.
Okay, just for example, I see one of the item is like all housing commissioner has to be Cupertino residents. And I would like to have the council have that option. It could be all five residents, or it could be one of them could be an outside, who doesn't live in Cupertino. If they're for an economic development business and then somebody could own a business here. So I'd like to have some flexibility on that. Okay, thank you.
I just, for the city attorney and city manager, just to sort of move forward on this, you've heard the comments by the public, many of them commissioners, about what can be tweaked and what is necessary to make this a stronger document. Is that enough for you to come back with the next step? So.
If that is, if that's council's desire to, is to provide direction to review those comments and come back with additional revisions, certainly we can do that. There are, there is an ordinance and two resolutions that are presented for council, which could be approved tonight either as is or with amendments by council. But if there's a desire for additional, you know, consideration of the public comments, that would be at council's discretion.
Okay, so, yeah, my thinking was if we had significant additions or changes to be made, we should probably lay it out and include that in the motion and make that part of the amended handbook. Yeah, Councilmember Moore.
I would actually be interested in a different approach. So the reasons for this recommendation, it says, is the city council identified the commission governance reform package as a priority item and added it to the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 work program. And this item's objective is to revise the commissioner's handbook, review potential municipal code violations by city commissioners. I have to say, I was alarmed to see that there was an investigation of our commissioners. And three, realign and regularize commissioner terms of office. And four, establish or revise commissioner qualifications. So this is a work program item. In my opinion, I think we would be better served if we were to have this entire package go to each one of these commissioners and committees so that they have a chance to have their input and collect it, bring it to city council, and we have some recommendations from what we have been given from the commissions, rather than trying to, at 10 o'clock, go through a batch of emails which we received with different recommendations over different sections that we don't know the whole background around that, and we're just hearing these bits of information from the chairs, for instance, that they're wanting some things to be changed. And I think it does take a little bit of conversation and time. And there have been a number of meetings which have been canceled. This would certainly be an opportunity for some robust discussion around the handbook and the rules and iron things out and have people face-to-face having those discussions. And I think it would be valuable if I could have a second to send this to the commission, to the various commissions and committees for input and then come back to us. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow first.
Oh, should I, okay, I'll second the motion for now because I haven't really commented. So I hope to maintain the business rep for housing commission and sustainability commission because I see the value in that, but I recognize sometimes the applicants might not be as qualified. So if we can modify the code to allow flexibility to not appoint a business rep at the council's discretion, but still maintain that so that maybe we do more outreach for business because they do provide a space perspective. Business could be from the multi-unit apartment management or realtor. Sustainability commission has a lot of business rep too. And then I would like to retain the annual report of each commission because it's very hard for the public, even the council to find out what exactly a commission did in a year. I remember the fine arts commission did a really good job on their webpage to summarize each year what they did, at least the top goal. And the monthly commissioners meeting with the mayor has no minutes and no reports. The rest of the council and the public have no idea what went on there. So I thought the written annual report or the six-month report would be good to have. And I would like, I would not support for the city manager to become the screener of a commissioner's qualification until I see something more concrete of what it looks like. Because I know from being a community member, community is always wary of something that's administratively determined and that has no transparency. And I've seen very biased committee being appointed by, for example, Fremont Union that many residents have complained about, and their criteria is not published. And then now there is a question of why are these people chosen, not other people chosen? So until I see a more concrete one, and so I have my reservation on that. And as for, yeah, so far.
Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So I think I have about three minutes and 30 seconds. I like the flex, again, the flexibility, being able to appoint one non-resident within five commissioners, and that's really up to the council when they're doing appointment. I do like the annual report on the commissioners, so if somehow we can incorporate that. So I'm giving guidelines, and in a motion, we can put the guidelines. The candidate's qualification, I think that will be spelled out, and it looks like our fellow council members would like to see every candidate anyway. So I don't see the redundancy that we'll put the pressure on the staff to recommend anybody. So maybe we could just say spelled out the qualification of each commissioner, and then the council gets to see all candidates. I think that's a good compromise on that and also alleviate the staff of having to do a lot of screening. That's basically, that's basically what I would recommend, the modification to the recommendations by the staff. As to having all commissioners go through this, we have received almost all chairs or vice chairs or some comments. So this is out there in the commissioners. I want to ask the commissioners in presence, this item is, well, no? I mean, you're here because you know this item is on the agenda. Just a quick yes or no? Yes, okay. So I don't see why this needs to, this is a council decision, and it's more like aligned with our city council procedures manual. I don't see a lot of major modifications, but some modification is very important. And another one is really the qualification, the trainings, the mandatory training they need to do. I think it's good to tighten up a little bit, okay? Because we do have a particular commissioner did not fulfill the Form 700 for over a year after multiple, multiple emails, phone calls from our staff. You know how much time our staff spent on it? We need to kind of tighten up this. So a little bit of tighten up on the approving of the, going through all the mandatory trainings and Form 700. And another thing is I really like the candidates to know what they get themselves into. So we have appointed someone, they said, oh, I don't want to fill the Form 700. Because, you know, you have to clear your stocks, your properties. It's so sensitive information, so maybe that qualification is out there with all applicants. You're getting yourself into this if you're appointed. So I think that could be tightened up a little bit too. And one more item, which I forgot what I want to say, so I'm going to reserve my one
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes, there is a motion on the table from Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Chow, to send this item to the various commissions and committees for input and then return to council for consideration.
Okay, could we vote on that and then come back for the discussion?
Well, I'd offer a substitute motion that I think addresses some of Councilmember Way's concerns, and once she's had the opportunity to read it, maybe she'll have more that she wants to add to it. I'll be sending this to clerk now.
Just waiting for it to come through the server. Okay, I have it now. I will share my screen. Okay, it should show momentarily.
All right, so the motion would have us adopt the staff recommended changes with the following in addition thereto. To further amend Cupertino Municipal Code, Section 2.86.02B4 and 2.94.010C, these regard the Housing Commission and the Sustainability Commission respectively, to add that council may give priority to representatives of a business located in Cupertino, and in doing so, may waive any Cupertino residency requirement so long as the business is located in Cupertino. Two, to modify Resolution 24-022 at Paragraph C, Sub 3, at the final bullet point to read as follows, "A member who fails to comply with legally required training or conflict of interest reporting requirements receiving notice and a 30-day opportunity to correct the noncompliance." So the removal would only apply therefore, a failure to cure within 30 days rather than a reasonable period of time. And then three, to further modify Resolution 24-022 to add a subparagraph to Paragraph C, reading as follows, "A member who has failed to complete any mandated or legally required training or reporting requirement shall be precluded from participating in advisory body meetings as a member of such body." I think that would address some of the other concerns that were raised with regard to individual commission members who have not completed their trainings and giving them a real incentive to do so that would otherwise be counted as an absence that could lead ultimately to removal. I think that's consistent with much of what Commissioner Stanek had to offer.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to that. Could we add the fact about needing an annual report from each commission so that we are all, you know, we're all knowledgeable about what's happening with each commission?
I'd be happy to accept that amendment.
Can I add an, oh, sorry, through the mayor.
Just to clarify, for the second point in your motion.
City Attorney Jensen, your microphone.
Thank you. For the second point in your motion, Vice Mayor Fruen, I believe it's a member fails to comply with legally required trainings or conflict of interest reporting requirements, and should there be an after receiving notice and 30 days' opportunity to correct the noncompliance?
Correct.
Yes, okay, just.
Councilmember Way.
Yes, through the mayor, I would like to add to your friendly amendment, to add a couple of items I mentioned, flexibility in appoint one non-resident in any commission as the council member's qualifications. Annual report, you added that already. Candidate's requirement, not having to go through the city manager, but does have that qualification out there, and event is notice what they need to do to fill out which form. And the one I forgot is this, the alternate schedules. How do you, how do we get alternate the time of it spelled a little bit so that we kind of understand the procedures, that according to law, that would be able to do? Is that okay with city attorney?
I think maybe I would need a little bit more clarification about what you intend with respect to the qualifications.
So no alternate, so what is the schedule looking like? Three months or four months or, so that we understand it's not going to be vacant for a long time?
Is that a request to amend the resolutions? Or is that just a question?
Maybe a procedural, I'm not so sure. Can you amend it, a resume put in there, or just a procedural? So that we feel comfortable that we don't appoint alternate.
I mean, so I think that what I would recommend is direction to the city managers to develop a policy for interviewing alternates, just because I don't think, at least I'm not prepared to appoint on sort of different legal requirements at this time.
I understand.
So if you wanted to address that, I would recommend that. With respect to the qualifications, just to clarify, would your amendment would amend the staff recommendation so that the city manager would develop recommended qualifications, but all candidates would be presented to council for an interview regardless of whether they meet those qualifications or not? Okay, just so everybody's clear, okay?
Yes, so my friendly amendment is to add flexibility in appoint one non-resident in any commission as the council member.
Vice Mayor?
That would be my, you know, we have flexibility. We don't have to, but we see a really qualified person who is not a resident, maybe we have the option to do it. That, you know, the annual report is done by the mayor, and candidate's qualification, I think city attorney Jensen just explained it, and alternate schedule, I think you explain it too. That would be mine.
The third point that I think I might have missed that is, is that with respect to non-residents, you would, what exactly is the intent? Um, you would, wh- what exactly is the intent of the, the amendment?
I just, just more flexibility?
For, for all commissions?
For, I thought was, okay, I was gonna do all, all, but I guess housing is one that we really in the business. Uh, I just, I would like to have that, that flexibility.
So, um, so I, so I guess I, I would, I would, um, note that, you know, the, the Vice Mayor's amendment does add some flexibility for the housing co- commi- commission.
And sustainability.
And sustainability, thank you. Um, and, uh, but I, I think if, if, if we were going to, to sort of look more broadly at those qualifications for all commissions, that cer- council can certainly give direction because that's within the scope of what's agendized, but I would, would recommend bringing a, a new first reading back for council's consideration.
Okay, so I will amend it to just limit the housing and sustainability.
Okay, that, that's already what it allows.
Okay, then I won't take that off of friendly amendment.
Okay. The, the other thing I would, I would just point out is that I believe at least as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, is that you have to be a qualified elector in the city in order to serve because it has a delegated authority from the city council, so that's the sort of problem that could arise. The, the other two, uh, friendly amendments, if you could restate them so that they're clear for everyone.
So the city manager, um, states, uh, the can- the qualification of candidacy and the advance notice of what they need to do, but the council gets to see all candidates.
Okay, all right. And then the other one?
And the alternate since it's eliminated, um, uh, city manager come up with a policy procedures, how to, how to recruit alternate.
How, how to recruit replacements once?
Yes.
Okay.
Replace, oh, replacement, sorry.
Okay.
Because, oh, we're not doing alternate anymore.
Under those terms, I would accept those amendments.
Because the mayor, mayor already put the annual report in there, so I didn't have to say. You accept that one, too, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm your secondar, or who's your secondar?
Is there a second?
Did I second it? Oh, sorry, I'm confused.
Are you seconding it now?
So I'll second the two friendly amendments.
Okay, all right, so we have a, a friendly amendment, we have a second. Let's just vote.
I have a friendly amendment to the qualification. I, I think that our commissioners know what the commissioner needs, and I'm not sure if the city staff is aware of the, 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 what each commission needs. So I would like to propose that we have the commi- each commission develop, um, the criteria or maybe a question list, questionnaire for future commissioners, and that might help, um, with the interview process, because I do feel right now the questions are so general, it's harder to find out how suitable they are, and we have only like two, three minutes of interview. So if commissioners can help develop a few questions, the future applicants fill out, I think that would help with the process. So with that kind of criteria, that's not coming from staff, but coming from commissioner, uh, would my council member accept this friendly amendment? Criteria developed by each commission.
So I would accept a friendly amendment that is a direction to the city manager to consult with the commissions, to inform the development of those criteria.
Yeah, so staff liaison work with commission to develop those criteria.
That they would consult with them, yes, I think that's fine.
Great. So would we, does the motion include, uh, putting this on commission agenda before it comes back to the council?
I, I, I think that that consultation doesn't necessarily need to occur in a meeting. I think that they could, the staff liaison could consult with each individual member of the commission.
I, if I could offer that, because I think it's important for the commission to discuss deliberately together rather than individually, so if possible, I hope to offer that friendly amendment to put the next draft on commission, um, agenda, so they could have a commission discussion, and they can have a commission recommendation or individual, uh, comments later.
City Manager Wu, how administrable is that?
I, I'm the secondar. I am not accepting the friendly amendment because it is, we are looking for perpetual qualifications, and I think you talk about city manager who gets other cities' qualifications and consolidate and get a real good qualification. I don't, if you ask me, what's the city council's qualifications, I, I, I think five of us have different, um, opinions. So I, I really think we need a formalized perpetual qualification, could, could morph over the years, but the consultation with other cities' qualifications, and maybe, I, I, I don't think going through every commissioner committee to get this qualification agreed upon is not a practical way to do it.
My understanding is, I think I like Councilmember Fuhr's way of phrasing it. It's the city staff working with commissions to develop this criteria, right? So that it has this collaborative input that we are trying to, uh, form, rather than one-sided, the staff determining that criteria, especially, I think commissioners who work together know probably better what qual- qualification is needed. I know there were like former teachers who were great commissioner, like Donna Austin, right? There were, we had former, um, yeah, there, there are, so, I, I feel the view staff has of, as qualification is different from the commissioners who act, actually are working and really representing the community.
Councilmember Chow, just to sort of wrap this up, uh, can, can we, uh, does that have to be included in a motion? Can we go ahead and, uh, with the motion that, that you proposed and that's been seconded? So? Can that, can we go ahead with that, with the understanding that there will be communication between staff and council members, not specifically about questions to be asked and so on at the commission meetings?
Let me propose a compromise, that the city staff manager come up with, consult with other cities, come up with qualifications, and send it to all commissioners for additional comments, and so that the city staff can incorporate as fit into the qualifications. Would that work for you? As a friendly amendment, I would accept that. Because to have fifty commissioners going into this thing, I, I just think it's complicated. But if they get it to appea- they get, get to see, uh, uh, qualifications already, and then they kind of get their input in there, and the staff will incorporate input as fit into the qualifications, would that be okay with you?
Um, I think in, each commission has only five commissioners. They are not going to be working together.
The staff is gonna have to work with ten commissioners, and that's ten, that's working with fifty people. That, that's, I just think it's more practical to do that. The staff will develop it and ask the commissioners for input and incorporate into the qualification as fit. Would that be okay with you?
I, I'm.
I would accept that friendly amendment, and the commission does get to see it and have input.
Because at this point, uh, from the feedback from staff, I am concerned, the staff has this concept of planning commission needs to have planning background, something like that, and I'm concerned that's.
They're gonna use other cities' qualifications and just.
I don't know even any other city has that qualification because city manager didn't even mention one city, so I, um, think with the lack of knowledge of that, I'm not sure. How do I support something I don't really know?
Okay.
So if you don't accept that, then I would like to propose the substitute motion that include everything that's proposed in the current motion with the addition that I proposed where the commission is the one that's driving the qualification for a future commissioner, maybe developing a questionnaire to help, um, also, this also educate the applicants to know what they could expect from working as a commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we should be wrapping this up. Uh, Councilmember Moore, one last comment, please.
Sure, so you, you made your, your motion, and I will second it, um, so I've been quiet here for a few minutes, surprisingly so. Uh, I, almost a year ago today, um, this council majority removed a planning commissioner, and that process took three hours and ten minutes. Um, it was painful to watch, it didn't have any procedure, um, and at the end of the discussion, uh, the, the, the accused was not allowed to, to speak. And from the meeting minutes, um, I moved, and Councilmember Chow seconded, to agendize a policy process for admonition, probation, censorship, censorship and removal for commissioners. And we've never addressed that, and I frankly don't ever want to see a commissioner, for whatever reason, persecuted for over three hours, uh, receiving all sorts of comments, and without us going to the trouble of making a process for that. You know, frankly, I think there's a legal liability there where, where it's, it's just, you're, you've gone too far, it's gone too long, and, um, if, were we to, uh, we, the, the council hires and can fire certain employees, but we would never, never have it like that. So I, I'm, would still want, I'd like to know first, why, you know, why did this, this, motion and second to agendize this policy, why it never came to council as an, as an actual, um, agenda item? It's, it's vanished. Um, can we bring it back? And does this council have any intention of coming up with a, a process so that we can treat commissioners, for whatever reason, you, you want to remove them, but we can at least treat them with dignity in that process?
Mr. City Attorney, have we strayed far from the topic?
I think we're starting to stray far from the topic. Um, so I, I guess, I mean, I think, I think, I think the, you know, the answer to that question is that commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council. Commissioners do not have any due process rights, um, with respect to their position. Um, so, you know, it, it really is completely in the discretion of the council as to whether to remove the commission. Um, you know, I, I won't, you know, speak to how that proceeding was conducted, but it, it's, it's kind of really irrelevant to, you know, it's sort of council's right to, to, to remove commissions for any reason or no reason at all. Those could be performance, they could be related to, you know, disagreeing with the commissioner on policy, um, they could be related to other issues, and so, so that I thi- I think, you know, and that, that's, I don't think unique to Cupertino, that's the way that, um, you know, a- appointments, you know, to, you know, advisory positions work, I think, in, in, in virtually all cities. So, um, uh, uh, you know, probably with a few exceptions, but, um, so, so, I mean, that, that, that's just sort of the legal framework that they're operating under. I, I can't speak to the sort of consideration of, of a change to that at this time.
But, through, through the mayor, we are doing the procedures, and so what I'm being told then, what I understand, is that it was really the mayor's discretion at that time to allow over three hours of, of, um, uh, discussion, public comment on that, and that we are in hopes that were this to happen again, as the process is now, it would be the discretion of the mayor, I would assume, to decide to, um, or would they need to ask the whole council to limit the amount of time? So perhaps, you know, you have a sense for how the meeting's gonna go, but you don't want to have this individual basically verbally punished for three hours. What can be done?
Are we, are we in session, or are we recessed?
Uh, can we take a two-minute recess?
Okay.
So, um, let me pick up where we left off. So when we, when, uh, before we took the break, Councilmember Moore was asking whether, you know, if there was a, a, a future proceeding to remove a commissioner, whether there would be a way, um, to, to, to limit the amount and time of public comment, or just sort of the, you know, the, um, exposure of the commissioner to that comment, and, uh, um, yes, in part. I mean, it is a public process, in contrast to say, you know, the, you know, you know, if you, if you were to remove the city manager or city attorney from office, you know, that would be, you know, a closed session item, so it would have to be a public process. Uh, but that said, that, you know, the, 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 the mayor would retain discretion to limit the time of individual comments and the total amount of ki- in time for comments under the Brown Act, um, you know, subject to, 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 you know, being overruled by a majority of council.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there anything that we?
Excuse me. Motion and second.
Yeah, what happened to our motion?
I, well, I, I.
I, I think that we're already at three motions.
Three, actually.
Yes.
One motion and two substitutes.
Yes.
Yeah, so let's, um, let's consider the second substitute. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you want to make a quick comment?
Um, yes, I just want to ensure that we treat our commissioners compassionately, even if they're being removed, um, in, in all cases. Um, I think that's the respectful and dignified thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go with the second substitute motion.
Wait, um, City Attorney, so the removal process of commissioners is germane to the agenda topic, right?
So the removal process for commissioners is within the scope of the agenda topic, but it, but the mayor retains the ability to, to control the council's debate? So, you know, I'm going to respectfully defer to her as to whether you're recognized or not at this time, Councilmember Chow.
So I think, I do remember the agenda request, but it wasn't on any of the TPD list, so I hope that it, we are, I, I will look forward that will be eventually agendized for this push. And so I guess we are voting on my substitute motion?
Yeah, with, the second substitute motion.
Is that mine?
Can we, uh, look at that one more time?
This is what I remember. So Councilmember Fuhr's motion with the amendment from mayor to retain the annual report, and my modification of this qualification development, using Councilmember Fuhr's language to direct this, probably not exact, but I try to capture, direct the city manager and liaisons to work with each commission to determine or develop, develop, I guess it's a better word, develop the qualification criteria for each commission and provide advance notice of the criteria to future applicants, but the council still interviews all applicants. And six, direct the city attorney to propose a procedure to appoint alternates that satisfy legal requirements. Is that accurate?
So that's the motion.
I, I should clarify that we won't be, that, that my recommendation is that we would not appoint alternates, but, but I believe you mean replacements.
Oh, not, um, sorry, replacements, you are right.
And, and, and just to confirm, Councilmember Moore is the secondary of the motion, are you, does this language acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, so. May, may I ask what's the, the only difference from the other substitute motion is number five?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when you mean by work with each commission to develop qualification criteria, is there a starting point? Who provides the base work and? I, I like to ask the city manager, is that a lot of hours to work? Do you think that's a doable? Is it better than the one I proposed, saying that, um, you, the city manager comes up with criterias and goes over it with, um, commissioners and collect input? Would that make a difference to you?
All right. I thought the discussion was that, uh, council gets to see all the, all, all the applications and the applicants.
Those are the same, it's how, how you develop the, the criteria, that's different. Those are the same, it's how you develop the criteria, that's different.
Except this line here says, but the council still interviews all applicants.
That was in all substitute motions. That's in my substitute motion, too.
Okay, yeah.
It is how to develop criterias, that's different. This more emphasizes the commission develops criteria. One more thing, the city manager gets qualifications from other cities and consult with commissioners to collect input and add or as fit.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Everyone clear about what the...
I have a question for the city manager.
Of course, I guess if the city manager collect, just did some research and collects some criteria, they would like to propose to the commission a starting point, I think that's between the liaison and the commission.
Yes, exactly. What else?
I'm just leaving.
Madam City Manager, did you have a comment?
I'm here to serve the council.
That's a perfect answer. Okay, so we have, so let's vote with lights. The second substitute motion.
The second substitute motion carries with Wei voting no.
All right. Okay, it's exactly 10:30?
It is exactly 10:30. That means that if council wishes to continue the meeting, you will need a motion to consider a new item.
Okay. We have one item left.
I move we continue it to 10:45?
Yes. Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Vote by lights, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, so the next item, number eight on the agenda, is consider the list of items requested by city council members. This is the TBD list. And our action is to review the list and modify the list as recommended below. Madam City Manager?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor, for introducing the item, and trying to save us all the time, so staff report's pretty self-explanatory. This is a quarterly TBD review. There are four items that we have collected so far, with staff recommendation for each of the item. I'd rather spend time answering any council's questions, unless council would like me to go into detail for which of, for each of the item.
Why don't you just list all the items?
Sure. The first item is to appoint a city treasurer, and staff recommends removing this item, as the city treasurer has been identified to be a designated for the city, by the city manager, as codified in the municipal code. Second item is to further clarify the public facility corporation tax exempt status. I believe a email and a memo has been provided to council on this matter, so we're recommending this item to be also removed. Third item is to have a housing element study session, and staff is currently working on a date. The last item is to move council meeting to Wednesdays, and staff recommends removing this item, as there will be too many changes, checking with the existing commission dates and facility and whatnot.
Do we need a whole lot of discussion, or can we go with the motion, too? Okay, let's take the public comments. Let's, let's...
Question to staff?
Okay, question to staff.
Okay. So the study session for housing element, would that come before, I think we expect HCD comment later in mid-April. I'm hoping that we'll have a study session before that, because none of the draft has ever been on the council agenda.
I'll take that into consideration.
So what is the staff planning right now?
I'm working on a date, so I'll definitely take your suggestion into consideration and work the final day with the mayor.
So can, do we have an idea how many dates, future meeting dates for housing element? Because usually at every housing element meeting, and in every other city, there is always, okay, here are the future meeting dates. Even though they are subject to change, at least there is some idea of what's upcoming, but we don't have those at all.
So the next...
To at least have some idea.
The next firm date is when HCD gets back to us. That's a firm date.
No, I mean council meeting dates, I, my understanding is we'll have a rezoning of sites that might need one meeting, and then final adoption might need one meeting, so we possibly will have a study session before those, so we can provide input and receive public comment before the final adoption, right?
I would definitely take your consideration into final consideration, working with the mayor to develop on the final date.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So I was wondering regarding the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation, if we can have an update for when our annual Board of Directors meeting is planned to happen? And also, an update about how the resumption of the tax exempt status is going? How is that proceeding? And could we be given some kind of timeline for when we would be able to have that information? As in, could we have something back within two weeks as a memo, to find out how things are progressing with that?
So this is a memo, it's not coming back to council as a TBD?
Well, it, it could come back as an agendized item, but I'd like to hear what's happening now. Because your recommendation, if I saw that correctly, it's been addressed administratively, and council has been updated, but I actually kind of like the idea that it comes to the whole council, so that people can be informed that we have this certificates of participation, and they are aware of it. That might be a good idea, actually.
So the latter is up to council to decide. We're only bringing the TBD list for council to decide how to move forward. I do believe the memo provided to council in January has addressed the comments that you asked. However, we can certainly provide an update. We will try to commit to a two-week turnaround. Understand that we are also working on the budget, that's also going to come to council and also CIP special project. So I hope council will understand and will prioritize on getting the budget through. Like I said, more than happy to commit to a two-week turnaround with some flexibility.
Okay. Thank you, I would appreciate that. Let's see, the other one, with regards to the city treasurer appointment, I think that item is more about the delegation of investment authority issue, and not, not the appointment part. And I'm trying to see if I can remember this, but I think it's Government Code 53607, but I, don't quote me. But there is a government code which council would annually delegate the investment authority to the treasurer, and at the end of the year, it expires, and it needs to be done again. And that's with regards to the investment authority portion, that I'm, that I'm trying to get some information about.
I apologize if we misunderstood, based on the email request, we understood it as a city treasurer appointment. But again, it's up to council to make that final decision.
Okay, so I'll, I can read it out, I did get it right. "The authority of the legislative body to invest or to reinvest funds of a local agency or to sell or exchange securities so purchased may be delegated for a one-year period by the legislative body to the treasurer of the local agency, who shall thereafter assume full responsibility for those transactions until," give me a second, "until the delegation of authority is revoked or expires, and shall make a monthly report of those transactions to the legislative body. Subject to the review, the legislative body may renew the delegation of authority pursuant to this section each year." And previously, when I was going through the records, the reason why I bring this up is that I did find it being annually delegated, annually delegated up until 2014. And then after that, I only saw one delegation to, no, actually, that was an appointment. It ended at 2014. Yeah, so anyway, I'd like to, to know the status on that one. And I, it can be handled in a memo, but if it turns out that we do need to put it on an agenda to actually delegate that authority, then we want to make sure that that's happening. Did that make sense?
It's clear to me. If, I mean, if, I could work with Admin Service to address that in a memo, if that, that would help you.
That works. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow, you wanted to discuss one of the other items?
So I have a question. The staff recommendation is to keep the Tuesday council meeting date, and I understand the difficulty, however, I, Tuesday is a day I have to be onsite at work, there is a series of meetings, and I could get caught up like today. To leave at 4:30 is, and then rush, risk my life today, actually rush through traffic, is very frightening. So I wonder whether if we keep it Tuesday, can we start council meeting no earlier than Is that possible?
I would hate to make that commitment, as we really have a lot of items coming to council in the next several months. And again, this will be in consultation with the mayor.
One of these days, I might be in an accident, rushing.
No, I think we'll make a good faith effort, but no promises. Any other discussion? Councilmember Wei?
Yes, so I hear you, Councilmember Chow. So I don't think we're going to make, I would be, be seeking mayor and city manager to try to start no later than 5:30, but it's not a promise. It just, it will be very, I hear you, so I would say, we'll try our best. I hope that we'll try our best to start not, no earlier than 5:30. But, yeah, I get it, sometimes we have such a long agenda, if we start at 5:30, 6:45, we won't be able to finish it, so, okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to?
Coming.
Oh, yeah. Are there public comments on the TBD items?
Yes, Mayor, I have one request to speak from Community Hall, from Jennifer Griffin. And I see one hand raised on virtually. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, City Council. I, oh boy, I am glad that the item of the housing element is coming up. I have asked repeatedly and explained my rationale for having a study session on the RENA, the issues with the RENA numbers, because they directly affect the housing element. As I have said repeatedly, the RENA numbers are false, therefore, we do not need to rezone half of Cupertino. I am very, very concerned about when we're having the housing element study session. I hope that, I do hope that HCD does not certify us. I don't believe that HCD has the authority now anymore. It's been shown, they are at fault, they need to admit it and stop. There will be a day of reckoning. I don't think that the public fully understands what happens after the certification. In 60 days, half of the city is rezoned, and we're going to have apartment buildings on every corner in the suburbs, we're going to have apartment buildings budding up against retail. It is going to be absolutely horrific. I have gone through this with some of the cities in Santa Cruz. You are going to get people coming in here that are livid. So I think that we need to, if you don't want the entire city to blow up in an explosion, we need to start explaining to people what happens when we get our certification. We're going to start getting letters nagging us that we have to recertify, we have to rezone everything in 60 days. The clock starts up. They're after our land. You're going to have people that are hysterical, crying, upset, I have seen it in other cities. But I, we can't ignore it. It is the 10,000-pound gorilla that is sitting in the back of the room. I do not trust HCD. We were not able to have a coherent conversation about the housing element and what the state is doing to us. I'm not willing to surrender my property to have an apartment building built on top of it, but HCD wants that. I don't trust the people who churned out the RENA numbers, and I understand it was HCD, I just got information about that. They are playing a loaded game. So let's have the housing element meeting, and let the public know the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we have one hand raised virtually. Lisa Warren, welcome, Lisa.
Mayor, we'll need another vote to extend the meeting, if we'd like to continue hearing this item.
I move we extend it to 11 o'clock.
I'm seconding it. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Lisa, thank you, please continue.
Hi, is it going?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, for the TBD, I can't stress enough how important it is to have some city council activity that involves the public to discuss the latest rendition of the housing element. And as a resident, a comment like, "We will take your suggestion into consideration," is rude, dismissive, and doesn't mean anything. We need to have this in a timely manner. And we all know how important the housing element is. So to put it below, things like whether we should have the city manager weigh in on who's qualified for commissions, is ludicrous and embarrassing. So please, do whatever is necessary to have a public meeting, hopefully, a joint meeting with Planning Commission, Council, and Housing Commission about the housing element, draft three, before we run out of time for the public to understand what is truly happening, and even our electeds to understand what is truly happening. So, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm being very honest, and I know I don't speak only for myself, so please have the decency to respect the comment from the public. Secondary, way secondary, but it would be really great if the calendar on the website, city's website, reflect when we have these 5 o'clock meetings, and, oh, by the way, please respect the hope for nothing earlier than 5:30, not just for Councilmember Chow, but for the public. But it would be great if it was posted like it used to be, as two meetings, one at 5 o'clock and one at 6:45, because people see a 5 o'clock meeting, they think they can't go, and they don't look into whether they should be there at 6:45.
Thank you, Lisa, that is your time. Mayor, no additional speakers.
Okay. The public comments section has ended. Okay, let's bring it back to council for a motion. Okay, the public comments section has ended. Okay, let's bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Moore?
So we've modified one and two so that we're going to be receiving, I believe, some memos regarding that information. So I would like to move the recommended, the recommendation for items three and four. And it looks like both of those. Yes, I'll move the recommendation for items three and four. And, and we're waiting on the, the memos per the timeframe that we were given.
Three and four is?
It's the housing element study session. Staff is preparing this for council. That's item three. Item four, the recommendation, the suggestion was to move the council meetings to Wednesdays. Staff recommends removing this item and I, I'll accept that.
Okay.
Second that, but I have an additional request. Should I say that now? Yeah, actually, by just reading this one-line item in the TBD list, and it's, I didn't understand what's really requested. So it seems it was kind of mischaracterized. So I was wondering, first, I'd like to thank the city manager for starting this new quarterly TBD list for us to talk together on this and making recommendation on that. But I hope there is more context for us to make decision on whether something should be agendized or not. So is it possible to provide maybe the request itself? Maybe, because these are all public requests, right? Maybe just include the email request as part of the agenda item?
We'll do that for next time. I apologize for not having this. Yeah, I apologize for not having it for this time. We will definitely include it for the next time.
That would be great because let's say if some other two council member requested something, I wouldn't know the, the reason they want to discuss that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Chow? You seconded it, right? Okay, let's vote by lights. Oh, sorry.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to accept the staff recommendation as a motion, but have the memos come back on one and two. I, I don't see why we need to keep the, this on this to-be list. Why we, my staff is going to give us the memos on both one and two.
Ask a question?
Sure.
So by a question?
Need the second first. If there's no second, we don't discuss it.
So I'll, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
So a question. The first motion did not include the item one or two. Does that mean it will just stay on the TBD? So maybe next time it will just be considered again? And then if we're satisfied with the report, then we will just remove it, right? So it really doesn't add any more staff work by keeping it?
Right, I think that's the decision for council as to whether, whether they want to keep it and, and, and review it the next time this comes back. You know, perhaps based on the memos that they receive or to take it off now.
Yeah, but my question is, keeping it on the TBD list does not increase any staff work, right?
I don't know if I have an answer for that. Sorry.
Councilmember Moore, what is the motion?
Thank you. So I guess that we would have, that we would receive memos on both one and two. But actually, I think that it does make sense that you don't want it to drop off given the content of those memos because that doesn't make sense. So if we, if we get some information about the Public Facilities Corporation, we know that we're the board. We know that we're supposed to be meeting annually. So we've got to have that scheduled. It's not really, it's not an option. It's an IRS requirement for a tax-exempt corporation. With regards to the treasurer's appointment, depending on what we get back, we might need to pass a resolution to make that delegation. So if we let it fall off the list, then we're not going to know what our obligations are. So I, I would recommend that we retain it on the list. That does make sense. But we're, we're waiting to find some information about both of these items.
I, I would just suggest, if I may, Madam Mayor, any two of us can always ask to put it back on the TBD list. So if any council member is not satisfied with the contents of the memo, that can always be asked for. We would have to review it again anyway at the end of the next quarter.
And if I heard right, Madam City Manager, you said that we'd get, you'd get back with some information in, in about two weeks?
As Councilmember Moore requested it, yes.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm going to make another substitute motion and that is that we actually agendize the meeting of the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation so that we can do our duty as the Board of Directors and, and just, and we'll retain the item one as a, we'll be receiving a memo. And depending on what is the contents of the memo, we'll be planning to have a, a resolution or not moving forward. And then we retain item three, the housing element study session. And we agree with item four, the staff recommendation that we remove that item.
You mean we'll take it off the TBD?
Yes, item four is removed off the list. That was the, that was in my original motion. But what I'm doing is memorializing that our requirement that the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation has our annual meeting. That's, it's our obligation.
Does it still need to be on the agenda? On a future agenda?
That, that's, that's up to council. I would just say that there's a motion and, 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 I mean, it's, if, if, if somebody would like to second it, it would be the, you know, second substitute on the table.
I'll second it. I do have a question. So is that a legal requirement to have a Board of Directors meeting for these public facilities?
There's, there's certain IRS requirements associated with nonprofit corporations. I believe that's what Councilmember Moore is referring to.
So we are legally required to have this meeting?
Yeah, so, so yeah, I think, I think that the, the city manager is right, is that this item is not on the agenda. But, but certainly council can vote on Councilmember Moore's motion.
But we can vote to agendize it, right?
You can vote to, you can vote to add it to the future agenda items list, which is what I understand Councilmore is asking council to do. Mayor, I'd say note the time.
We should be wrapping it up. We're almost there. Let's, let's, okay, is there a substitute motion?
Oh, my, sorry. My other question earlier was, doesn't it more, create more staff work to take something off, put it back on again? Oh, never mind.
Okay, well, let's vote on the substitute motion, the second substitute motion, which is, can we quickly reiterate it?
I believe so. Agendize the annual meeting of the Public Facilities Corporation. Retain item one and wait for a memo. Retain item three, housing element study session, and remove item four.
Okay. Let's vote by lights.
The second substitute motion carries with way voting no.
Okay, that's, that's the end. We, yeah, that's the end of the agenda. So we don't have to deal with all the other items. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.